Okay, folks, so now we're, okay, so we've moved to the regular agenda. And the first item, since item 15 has been moved, we're putting item 30D in its place. It's unfinished business, but it's really the topic of beach accesses, Beller Shore ordinance, beach accesses, and a big part of this discussion is also our control of beach access points. I suggested to Lynn Reeves and to our, since this is not, we don't need a motion for this, this is a discussion, but we're going to come out of this with resolution points, hopefully, for where we're going for a city. So this will be an action item. You will see it done here. We're not allowed, at least the ones who have never come to council meetings or never have seen this before, we're not allowed to talk with each other beforehand. Okay? It's illegal. So we can only speak with the city attorney and the city manager sitting in court, but we can't speak with each other. So we don't know what each other's positions are right now. This all has to get out in the open right now. Some information's been put out there, but no one's responded to things in terms of the city council, so this is the meeting that we're gonna have. So I suggested to Lynn Reeves and our city attorney, by the way, I had a request from one of the citizens, if we could please speak very closely to these microphones. They only work if they're two inches away, so they, people are having more time hearing us, so please just bring them closer when you're speaking. Can I ask city manager and city attorney if I could give a brief overview? Just to kind of let everyone know, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and just to really let everybody know, we have three different types of beaches in our city proper than across the street from Beller Shore, which is another city. And I wanted to just, with everyone's permission, basically, give you a quick overview. Now, you know, a lot of you know I'm an attorney. This is not legal advice. And as city manager Reeves said, he goes, "I don't want anybody leaving this saying, 'The mayor said he's an attorney.'" Okay, this is not legal advice. This is the way I see it. I have a folder, this bit, so far, that I have accumulated as a legal file, so please don't request this. I'm a citizen holder. I own, just like everyone else who has to go with the folder, I own interest in that lease. You all do too. And I was very concerned, obviously, with what happened with this umbrella stuff. So you can challenge it as an individual resident, you can challenge it from the city. We're gonna talk about not challenging at all and try and work it out, and that's kind of what we're gonna do with this. So let me give you a quick overview. Okay, we've got three beaches. I'm gonna go from the easiest one to the hardest one. The easiest one is Beller Beach, okay? And basically, this is the area right above 19th Street. It's owned by the city of Beller Beach. We've got white sand, which we call wet, which we call dry sand, and then we've got the wet sand, which is down by where the water actually hits the tide. Along this map that Lynn has up here, which doesn't have Beller Beach on it, there's a thing called the erosion control line. That is the limit where private property goes to what is now state property, the wet sand, okay? In Beller Beach, it's real easy. It's the retaining wall. So when you go and you walk along Beller Beach, and you see the retaining wall, that, up to that retaining wall, from the Gulf of Mexico to the retaining wall, that's private, that's public property. Enjoy the beach, okay? If you're down by the water's edge, you're technically under the control of the state. The land itself, the wet, the dry sand, Beller Beach, is under the control of the city council. So the city council makes the rules, the ordinances, and anything else that affects the usage of that. Lynn Reeves is in charge, the city manager, of maintaining that beach. So if you see something that you don't blank there, that's our city's responsibility. Lynn has his crew, his DPW crew, they go up and down, they take care of that. That's our responsibility. We rate the sea, we do different things. That's Beller Beaches, okay? Anyone, anyone in the world can use that beach. There is no restriction. The only provision is, if you bring your car and you park in one of our parking lots, you either need to have a Beller Beach decal, or you need to pay the parking fee. If you do that, and you abide by the rules, enjoy the beach. Anyone can use it. That's the easiest one. From First Street in Beller Beach up to 19th Street in Beller Beach, once you go across the street, once you go across Gulf Boulevard, you're now in another city. And that city is called Beller Shore. It's completely not our city. It's, we don't own anything there. The residents of Beller Shore all have Gulf Fairhouses. If you take a look at these maps that you see here, you see this thing called the erosion control line, okay? That line extends from their property into an imaginary place in the sand. You will not go out there and be able to find that erosion control line. On this map, you'll see frontage, you'll see signs, 26, 36, 80, you know, 82. That is the amount of feet from their seawall to the erosion control line. They own that beach, those residents. If you're sitting against a retaining wall, you are on their property, private property. This was not taken by the city of Beller Shore. It was not given by the city of Beller Beach. It's actually constitutional. It goes to the state constitution. It goes to the federal constitution. Most of the residents, historically, have been very understanding and have let people go and sit on that beach. Really, you're sitting in their backyard. They don't have to do it. Most recently, some of the residents, a few, have said no. And that's usually because there's been abuse. There's been abuse that people have went in their swimming pools, people have sat on their lounge chairs in the middle of the pandemic, people have had beer parties, people have had marijuana parties, people have started deciding to, you know, set up cornhole games and everything else, and play loud music, and hook up tents. And these folks, some of them have just said no, so we're not gonna permit you to do it. So if you're behind the erosion control line, in other words, eastward of the erosion control line towards their house, they have the right to ask you to move. And again, I'm not your attorney. I would suggest if an officer asks you to move, that you probably should move, okay? The officer's gonna ask you to move to the wet sand area, which is the area in front of the erosion control line. So if you look down here, I can't even see that, but I think that might be 100 feet or something on Third Avenue, Third Street. Basically, you'd have to move 100 feet away from that seawall. Sometimes it's not 100 feet, sometimes that's underwater. But most of the times, it's 100 feet of beach, and you can go out there, and you can put your blanket or your chair there and enjoy yourself. That's, you're on state land again, okay? So that's private property. If the residents, again, this is a suggestion or a requirement, if the residents are courteous enough to let you use that property, please be respectful. I think the problem isn't that there are Beller Beach residents. It's been the outsiders. Which takes me to the three beach easements. There are three beach easements. One on Sixth Street, one on 12th Street, and one on 19th Street. These are the areas where we see the little gates, okay? You're still in the city of Beller Shore, but each one of those beach easements has been given to the people of Beller Beach who live east of the center line of Gulf Boulevard. Sorry, folks who are in the condos, you have your beach ready. This was given back in the 1940s to the people who are landlocked. We have, we enjoy a perpetual easement or license to use that property for beach and bathing purposes. That's what it says. Don't ask me what it means. You certainly can go to the beach and enjoy yourself. You certainly can go suntan, but we can't do anything we want. So for example, the city of Beller Shore has set up rules that say you can't build a fire on the beach. You can't have glass bottles. Well, these are safety concerns, and it's their city, and they make those rules, and I would think those are pretty reasonable rules. So why are we here tonight? We're here tonight because the city of Beller Shore has passed an ordinance, most recently, that pretty much prohibits old shade covering, okay, on the entire city, okay? It bans it for the residents. It bans it for our beach access points. And that's where we're at right now. So I know some residents have been very upset with this. I've heard from several people. I'm upset personally, and there's a lot of options that we can consider as a city. The city of Beller Beach does not own those access points. I'm gonna call them easements, because that's what I always call them. Those three things are maintained, though, by the city of Beller Beach under what's called an interlocal agreement with the city of Beller Shore. So Lynn Reeves' group, again, they maintain that. They empty the garbage. They take care of painting the parking lot. They do all the work that's required over there. But it's for our use, and it's only for our use. If you are not a Beller Beach resident living east of the center line of Gulf Boulevard, you do not have a legal right to enter through those access points. You still can walk along the wet sand. So if you come down from Indian Rock, so you're walking in the water, or you're walking, you know, two feet off the water, you're on the wet sand, the state sand, that's fine. But you don't have the right to cross from the, let's say, the sidewalk outside Sixth Street and walk through. You don't have the right to walk along the beach and say, "I'm gonna take a shower. I'm gonna sit on that bench." You don't have that right if you're not a Beller Beach resident. Now, historically, we've had some issues without trying to keep people out. It's been an ongoing request of mine to the city manager. He's made it under the police. We get improvement, it stops. With the pandemic, it has begun overwhelming, and all these people are coming in. They're coming in on Ubers. They're coming in in taxi cabs. They're coming in, and they're using this. They're outside of our city, and they're not respecting the property rights of the people of Beller Shore. I listened, folks, to the four hours, two hours worth of meetings with Beller Shore. I cannot disagree with their residents. We wouldn't tolerate it if it was in our backyard. Where I'd have the problem, and which we're gonna open up to the council's discussion right now, and then the city's discussion, is this ordinance to ban the umbrellas was made with the stated purpose of, well, if we ban the shade, maybe they'll all go away. Well, I'm fine with that if the other people who don't belong there go away. That's my position, but not the Beller Beach residents. We have a right to go to the beach and enjoy the beach. And enjoying the beach is not walking away with skin cancer and second-degree burns. We need shade, okay? I don't think it can be said any easier. We have a variety of options that are open to us, and I will just read this, and I'm gonna turn it over to the council. I have meeting with Mayor Schmidt. I did not represent the city. I think that he specifically said both of us were operating as individuals. I have the right as a property owner to speak with him. He happens to be a friend of mine, and I called him up, and I said, "What are we gonna do here?" I said, "This thing's gonna be viral. It's gonna be a problem." I said, "What can we do? We need to have shade." He goes, "I hear you. We understand." And he said that, to me, he said he was going to bring a motion to eliminate the umbrellas from the ban. May have told Mr. Reeves something slightly different, that basically to exempt the easements from the ban, but they're going to change this. They're hopefully gonna change it, but on the 21st of July is their next council meeting. And he asked me to just exercise forbearance and tell the people in the city, "Can you wait until the 21st? I'm gonna take care of it." I will say, I've known Mayor Schmidt for over a year. He's a man of his word. I like him. I will put a good word for him. If he says he's gonna get it done, I think he will. But as he said, his council has to approve it. So the purpose council tonight is to see how, as a city, we wish to proceed, okay? Keep in mind, Beller Beach, as a city, is a property owner on this side by virtue of owning city hall and marinas and parks. So the city has a right, if they wanted to go to litigation, they could on behalf of the citizens. Any citizen can go, but I'm not advocating that. I'm not advocating that. We just try and work with them, and more importantly, work with them to control these beach access points. It's not gonna be good enough that we talk to Capitol Hill either. If necessary, we're gonna hire more police. We're gonna put in gate systems that keep cars out. We're gonna put in tags if we have to. We've had proposals for beach badges. We need to come up with a way of showing the folks in Beller Shore that we wanna keep the outsiders who don't belong there off that beach. I think once they go away, my feeling is this problem goes away. It's not the Beller Beach residents that are going in people's pools. I don't think so. And if you are, you stop, because it's not good. With that said, I've spoken enough. I'm gonna turn it over to, I wanna see if Trent Riley or Lynn Reeves has anything to add to this, and I'm gonna turn it over for the discussion and council.
Mayor, council, I spoke with Mayor Schmidt, and I've also spoken with Commissioner Blum from there. He called me to discuss it. And I think at this point, the sheriff is not enforcing it. That's my total understanding. And I can tell you, I was at each beach access over the weekend, twice each day, and there didn't appear to be too much of a problem. For the most part, our residents were staying within the confines of the access. There might have been one person who was down a beach a little ways, but for the most part, the residents are doing, you know, what's reasonable. And I can honestly say that I didn't see outsiders at all. So I think where the outsiders came in was when the beach reopened. Unfortunately, the sheriff put a big dashboard up and listed those three accesses, which really shouldn't be. Is that private? I think that's what brought the crux of the problem. So, you know, I think the residents, for the most part, are honoring, you know, taking care of, you know, enjoying the beach. They're, everyone I spoke to down there, they were very cordial. They weren't out there to create issues, and I don't think that's the intent. So the intent going forward, in my mind, is let's have the discussion with Beller Shore and see where we can come to some common ground, and, you know, as I suggested to the mayor, hey, maybe we exempt the beach accesses or the umbrella. If you're having your issue, if you look at the diagram, I'm sorry about the bubbles. If you, if someone wants to go in that 68 feet of Third Street, then, you know, that's an issue. And put up an umbrella, or put up an canopy, or, you whatever, that's a private issue. If they go below that line, it's still controlled by the city or town of Beller Shore. And their ordinance would still be in effect, just like our ordinance says on our beach. You can't have a dog. Doesn't mean you can walk your dog on the wet sand. It means you can't have a dog. So I think going forward, I think with all this, and I don't think, unless there's someone out there that told me that somebody tried to arrest me or, you know, do something, I think going forward, it'll be fine. You just have to, how do you say it? Stay calm and try to work it out. And we are gonna have some discussion, based on my discussions with both of those people. We wanna have some discussion on how to control the access, and what that line looked like at this point in the future. But hopefully, if both wanna control it, we share in that expense going forward and make it a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, Brian? I'll make several comments. I will first make a disclaimer like Mayor Manzo. My legal guidance is directed to the city council. It's not directed to individual citizens. I'm gonna read a list of documents that I looked at, and I provided the city council with some legal analysis, but let me read you the documents. And the purpose of reading them is to show, give you some idea of, you know, the degree of complexity of this issue, although it's not that complicated. I looked at the abstract, the title, which is, relates to the three access lots, the interlocal agreement between city of Beller Beach and the town of Beller Shore, the town of Beller Shore's Article 1, which relates to beach access, and beach access restrictions, the town of Beller Shore ordinance, which is 2020-01, which is the one that has the prohibitions related to the shade and the canopies and umbrellas. I also looked at the three individual property appraisal printouts, which depict the three beach access lots, and I also looked at Attorney, Florida Attorney General Opinion Number 2002-38, which relates to the regulation of the dry sand portions of the beach. After looking at all that stuff and talking to Mayor Manzo and to city manager Reeves, I put together an email that I shared with the city council members to try and make sense of it all and take a position. That email was shared with the city attorney for the town of Beller Shore, and I spoke with her last week. We had a very civil and professional conversation. I will tell you, we differed on interpretation of their ordinance, and we agreed to disagree. But where I think you are this evening as a council, is really pretty straightforward. I think you have really two, two things that you should do and you should strongly consider. The first is to authorize city manager Reeves to continue what he's already begun, which is to have informal discussions with them to see if a informal resolution can be worked out. If that proves to be unsuccessful, then you'll, I think you will know that relatively soon. And what I would then suggest to you, and this suggestion was also made by the town's attorney, is that we do a, or Chapter 164, dispute resolution, which is a mechanism for this resolving disputes between two governments. And that's basically a mediation process. It's used quite frequently, and it's a way for two governments to both approach things in a reasonable and sane manner and get a resolution without having a border war. So that's, those are the two things that I would recommend you to do, and I will echo what both the mayor and city manager have said. To my knowledge, there has not been a flurry of people getting cited, and there's not a whole lot of action. Everybody recognizes there's a problem, and everybody, I think, recognizes that the problem should be resolved, and, you know, this is a time, this is a time and the type of dispute that absolutely should be resolved with reasonable people sitting down and working it out. And I'm not a proponent at this point of the city taking any action to get involved in litigation. I think you would really be wasting time, effort, and money on that. And again, my feeling is you will know pretty quickly if something can be worked out. I have every expectation something could.
I'll just add to that. I have spoken extensively, again, and I know this as well as anybody in the city, so I've offered to continue to speak with Mayor Schmidt. I'm going to, as a private citizen, whether I'm representing the council or not. Again, every citizen in this room, if you live east of the center line of Gulf Boulevard, has a right to be heard, and I hope that you will be heard on the 21st at the meeting. Be respectful, and tell them what you think, because they wanna hear from us. But I would like to continue that. I would be more than happy to represent the council's views, providing that they are in sync with my own. I'm completely in sync with your views, okay? This is a litigation file that I'm starting. I'm not going to litigate anything. I have no intention of doing so. But when you came back after telling me that their attorney outright rejected our proposal, well, I thought it was time to start preparing. It doesn't mean we're going to litigation. This is not the struggle, folks. This is my litigation file. I'm a property owner. And basically, this is something that I think that can be worked out. I think they understand completely what the situation is. But I will tell you, this is the opinion of four attorneys that I have reference to, that this is something worth fighting for. And I got a letter from a citizen today that said, "We moved here so that we could use those beaches, and if they're compromised because we can't have shade and we can't have umbrellas, essentially, people are gonna make it so difficult that we can't use beaches anymore, property values." And as a citizen, I'm not gonna let that happen to me. Other people can accept that. I will not. I think that this would be easily worked out. I think the town of Beller Shore is gonna fix this thing. Lynn's nodding. We both have spoken to the same mayor. We know they're gonna fix this thing. So I don't think anything's gonna be necessary, other than we go over, and we all be polite on the 21st, and they're gonna fix this up. We're not gonna have an issue. As for the other issue with the erosion control line, sitting on people's private property, I'm of the opinion that this is not a city issue. If you're sitting on somebody's property, just like if you decide tonight to go come in my backyard, I'm gonna ask people to leave, and if not, then you probably need to tell this town's sheriff, because you can't stay in my backyard. So this is a citizen-to-citizen issue. That city, that town, Beller Shore, does not enforce that rule. Citizens, the citizens do it, because they're the owners, and we don't protect you on that. We don't get involved in private disputes. So my recommendation to council will also be that we don't get involved in any type of litigation. And I will say this, I also, I've spoken with mayors who did get involved in litigation. We don't want them to go there. We took $100,000 per person to litigation, and it wound up in a scandal, and everybody wound up paying legal fees. They got nothing out of it. So absolutely, under no condition should litigation do something on our radar unless no one wants to work with us, and they just say, "Too bad," you know? Or I heard a comment by a citizen there, and they said, "Well, lock the gates." Well, if they ever lock the gates, I'll be the first one, representing myself and myself only, to get those gates unlocked by getting an injunction. You can't lock those gates. That's out of the question. So that's where I stand on it. I want to hear what the council has to say.
And I'm gonna go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, I agree with the diplomacy at the local level. I think that's very formidable, and that's the way we should go. However, here's a couple observations. One is, I don't think it's appropriate for Mayor Manzo to talk to Mayor Schmidt, resident to resident. I mean, there's a perception issue there, and there's a conflict issue there. I see, Mayor Schmidt, if I understand, he's basically a strong mayor, right?
No, he is not. He is not a strong mayor.
They have a city manager?
They do not.
Or a district?
City manager.
I would still fall back to my position. I think there's a conflict there and a perception issue there. The person who needs to take the lead on this is our city manager. Our city manager should be talking to either their council members or their mayor before any, any perception of conflict or impetus here. City manager should do all our negotiations, all our diplomacy, bring it back to the city council, discuss the issues, their comfrontality debate, and then at a collective body, we decide in public court with action. I think at the end of the day, the goal is to institutionalize and answer a lot of these longstanding questions that seem to have undeeemed memories, or there's some conflict about how it's interpreted. Obviously, our city attorney, it was from his interpretation of the legal documents from their city attorney. So whatever course of action we take, I'm all for. But at the end of the day, whatever that form of action is, I think we need to iron out some of these negative questions, the pressing questions, and institutionalize them for perpetuity, because we all know what's gonna happen. Council members change out, the city staff change out, residents change out, and in five, 10 years, we're gonna be reinventing this issue. So it would hurt to, let's resolve the thing once and for all, and do it on a legal basis, so that ten years from now, 15 years from now, if this issue raises again, you can call back to the legal documents, and nobody will regret having those legal documents available. Thank you. That's all there.
Glenn, I'm just going to, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna rebut something you said, and then I'm turning back to council, because it's critical what you just said. I'm gonna be speaking about this later tonight, about people stepping on other people's First Amendment rights. I did not, when I became mayor, see my First Amendment rights for the city of Beller Beach. I am a property owner with deed and access to those easements in perpetuity. I will not be stopped speaking to anyone who wants to listen to me. I have the right to go to that council meeting. I do not, and I will not, without permission of council, represent this city. But I am a property owner here. I hold as much right to them as anyone else, and I intend to make my voice heard, and no one is going to tell me I cannot do that. That would be an infringement of my First Amendment rights. And as done by a government actor, we're gonna be talking about that. Mr. A spoke about something that we're gonna be talking about later. You can't do that. Any citizen, any citizen has the right to speak to another government official if they'll listen to him. I've spoken to Senator Brandeis about this. I'm gonna speak to other people, okay? So I don't have to represent council. That's council's decision, and I don't even know if I want to represent council. I don't know the council's opinions yet. Other than that, I agree with everything else that the vice mayor said. I think this does need to be memorialized. I disagree with one thing that Lynn Reeves said, that this is a temporary problem. I have been complaining about this problem since I became mayor. There's an inundation. If you went there tonight, if we have a pretty sunset, you will find car after car come in in a quick method. None of them from this city to watch sunset. I've noticed it, and so have all the residents in Beller Shore who have the houses that are adjacent to it. I see them sitting on their retaining walls. I've seen them walking in their backyards. It's unacceptable. They don't have the right to be there, these people. Our Beller Beach residents enjoy it. It's there for us. But I understand something, too. As these residents in Beller Shore exercise their right to exclude us from their dry sand that we've historically been using, it makes our beach much, much more limited. You basically have the three easements, which are about 80 feet wide and maybe about 80 feet long on a given day. If I've seen them where they're 10 feet long, it's not a lot of place to put 19 blocks of citizens here. I got 19 blocks in Beller Beach that use those three access points. So I don't wanna share this with people from Tampa. Sorry. I paid extra for this. And so, you know, our sand was much more expensive than the other sand in the neighboring towns. So I want what I'm entitled to, and I'm not gonna take any less. I'm not compromising my rights. We have deeds that spell that out. I want my beach. I want my beach access. I want my M2A. What do you have here? Who's next?
I would like to say.
Sure.
I agree with Vice Mayor Glenn Dunn, and I also strongly suggest that council ask city manager Lynn Reeves to represent the city in their discussions with the mayor of Beller Shore. You know that Mayor LaBonger has a lot better relationship, I think, and I think that will play a and I think that will play a big part in the decisions that Bellar Shore makes, hopefully. But I understand what Lynn Reeves is making the, you know, developing the conversation and the communications on behalf of the city council of Bellar Beach.
Vice Mayor, I think it might be bad that you openly dispute your First Amendment rights. I think the impact is when you took it home to be the mayor, there are certain considerations that things you should be thinking about. I mean, if you want to make input at the residents, that's fine, but they're probably better and more privileged now than to just say, "I'm going to go visit Mayor Schmidt, resident to resident, and we're going to discuss city issues." I mean, take a step back there. Take a step back from all of that and think about that situation and how it's perceived by other people who live there. Especially the people who work with you in the council and the members of the council on the other side. And the residents, it just, it doesn't add up. So all I ask is we need to take a step back, think about that situation. And the easiest way forward is city manager is the way forward and our main contact will be with the city of Bellar Shore.
Okay, Mayor Dunn, Vice Mayor Dunn, I'm going to, at this point, take myself out of being the official representative for Bellar Beach. But I disagree 100% with you. I served on a council of mayors for Pinellas County. I served on the big seat, which is a group of all the mayors of Bellar, of Pinellas, of the beach. What do you think we do? We talk. I have every right to speak to other mayors. And I'm going to speak to other mayors. These are the contacts that I've made and why I'm in politics. So I'm going to use any political connection I can. My viewpoint may match the city of Bellar Beach. It may not. And I'm not going to be told otherwise. I'm not even going to discuss it anymore. But if this council is in agreement that they want Lynn Reeves to be the point person, remember, the city of Bellar Beach doesn't own these access points. You as citizens own them. We do not represent you on that. You represent yourselves. Any one of you can call up Mayor Schmidt. He takes your phone call. Any one of you can go to our council meetings. So I'm not going to bargain for a right that I have. But I don't have to represent the city of Bellar Beach. If you want, the city of Bellar Beach has its own position, and Lynn Reeves can make that position. That is not necessarily the position of the citizens. You may not agree with what Lynn Reeves is saying. It's up to you then as a citizen to do something about that. I will, I will be at that meeting. I will be speaking at that meeting next month. I'll be speaking as myself, as a private owner of a MARS. That's the end of the discussion as far as I'm concerned. But the rest of the council, I'd like to hear what, you know, where our response collectively as a city should be.
Can I just add that I agree we all have a right to be heard, but as a representative of the city, I believe we need one person spearheading that, the city's position. And I would like Lynn to do that for us. I know we have a good relationship with Mayor Schmidt. Now, the one, the couple of things that I kind of made notes is, we were kind of laying this out, is that, you know, the beach has been unusually busy because of COVID. I mean, there's no sports. There's nothing for anyone to do. People are going to the beach. They're coming to any beach, any access they can find, the park. I know we've had this discussion before that, you know, the ticketing vehicles, they're trying to, you know, limit those that shouldn't be there, which is part of the problem why this is in front of us right now. And we've talked as a council in the past about trying to enter into an agreement for towing vehicles that shouldn't be in those parking lots. And Lynn, as part of your discussions with mayor, that might be, that might be something to talk about, is how, you know, how can we help them control who's coming to those beach accesses? And, you know, I think it's important, I think your idea of maybe discussing, can we have umbrellas in the access points? You know, can we, and I hate to say fence it off, but I mean, there's really cool beach fencing you can use, with little picket fence, like outline, here's the allowable umbrella space, something like that. I mean, you know, using the little white picket fencing like you see in beach communities that you use for sand ravers or something. But somehow to, you know, just let them know we're making an effort to help control the overflow of people in their backyard. I know for a fact it's an issue. I lived on Bellar Shores many years ago, and it was an issue then. I can only imagine it's worse now with the number of people accessing our beaches. You know, other than that, you know, just, I say be good neighbors. I've been saying this from the get-go. They allow us to use those access points in exchange for us maintaining them. We're not good neighbors to even our next-door neighbor. Why are we going to be good neighbors? You know, we just need to be aware of, this is someone's private residence that you're camping behind the house, you know? Just kind of be aware of that, that someone lives in that house, and you wouldn't like it if they were in your backyard. So I'm just saying, be considerate of our neighbors. And Lynn, you know, I trust you and keep everyone's best interest at heart.
Hang on, Vice Mayor, we go through the first set of comments here. Dave Gaddis has the floor.
I believe that before the 21st, we should have some sort of an action item completed to show them that we're making an attempt to curb the amount of visitors that are essentially attacking their home front. One way that we're doing that already is we're going to be discussing shortly raising the parking rate. It's not going to cure everything, but that's a good example of something that we're trying, that we're at least not ignoring the problem. We're trying to figure out some way to curb people coming that don't live here. And I think with that and maybe something else, other suggestions, and we're also open to suggestions about anything we can do that may also help. Because I think honestly, we've just not had enough dialogue. COVID has brought such a mass influx of humanity, and I'm sure it's very overwhelming for them. So I am in total agreement with waiting, and at the same time, allowing Lynn to continue talks with Bellar Shore. And let's give them the opportunity to come back with their own suggestions. And maybe we can meet somewhere in the middle. I don't, I don't really think that this is, that all is lost. I don't, I truly don't believe we're going to lose our beach. I think it's just a matter of, right now, it's very traumatic times for everyone. And if everyone could normally be here over a long period, here in spring break, essentially getting cheaped, and now that I couldn't because of this virus, as soon as the beaches opened back up, it was completely overwhelmed. And I totally understand their frustration. And that's, that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
I've been here 20 years. Lynn has been here over 20 years. And at one time, there's a lot of people that may not know we are a police department. At that time, there were two officers assigned to the city, two at night and two during the day. So they didn't leave the city. They were here. So at that time, there was a lot of coverage on the beach. No question about it. And that changed. We went to Pinellas County Sheriff. Correct me if I'm wrong. And Pinellas County Sheriff now pays for, let me think about it. Bellar Shore pays for coverage in their area. And there's only a percentage of time, one guy on shift, that goes through the beach areas. So most likely, with the recent COVID and the people coming down, and eventually, as time went on, people realized there weren't two officers 24 hours a day in Bellar Beach for Bellar Shore. So that's changed. So people, they can. So I think with Lynn's experience and knowing all the things announced the last 20 years and what's happened, and he's personally heard the contracts that are, that Bellar Shore and Bellar Beach handles, I think something can be worked out to find a solution and coverage for these beach accesses. I brought up in the work session possibly what gate accesses are. That would prevent any drop laws. So anybody who buys a Bellar Beach sticker for cars or anybody that lives in Bellar Beach can have a car access and enter that area without a problem. Then you wouldn't need someone standing in front of those three accesses 24/7. That might be the simple way. Maybe a little costly, but if you talk to, talk about the cost of a sheriff in the city, another man, that's a hundred thousand a year. So there might be some option there. So these are things I believe Lynn, the mayor, could talk out, and I rely on his experience to go forward.
When I first heard about this umbrella thing, I was annoyed, irate, and I just thought it was ridiculous. From the medical standpoint, I was outraged. I understand why they're doing it, because people have taken liberties and abused the privilege, not necessarily our residents. But I think what we need to do is start with the basics. I don't think you need to go extreme to like the gay idea. I think start with, you know, yes, the sheriffs have limited time, but instead of taking the time to go on the beach and say, "Hey, who owns the Honda? Who owns this one that doesn't have a tag? Hey, who's your car?" Stop that. It takes a lot less time just to write the ticket. So no badge, via ticket, there's no worries. You know, if it's a resident who hasn't bought their tag yet, that's unfortunate, but hey, that would motivate you to come and get the tag. I would start with that. If that doesn't work, then I would go more towards the chile way, so. Soon as somebody gets their car towed, I guarantee you that's going to get out on social media, that someone from Canada came to Bellar Beach, got their car towed because they parked in the wrong spot, and all of a sudden, people aren't going to come. And like I said at the last work session, I mean, you have to have realistic expectations. If they're going to make the effort to come, they're going to find a way. So I've seen people park at Panera and walk over the bridge, pulling a wagon with their kids and all the floaties and everything. So you're not going to stop at 100%. You just hope that those people that go through all that effort are going to be thankful they're there and respect the property. I do agree that I think Lynn should spearhead this and have one form of communication. I think, of course, any resident's allowed to talk to any resident. And I'm willing to do this conservatively, do this the nice way, but I agree with Fred that, you know, there are certain steps, and if the one conservative right way is not done, then we need to be more aggressive and show them that they can eliminate our shade. I can just bring pictures. I'll do a whole PowerPoint presentation of the skin cancers and the removal of the skulls that I have to heal, so. That may go some out, maybe worth it. So, yeah, I support Lynn to represent this, and go on down.
We have been speaking about possible resolutions, but we've been speaking about it. And I would like to get direction to the city manager tonight, because we've been speaking about this, I don't have my notes, since May 15th. The idea of towing, raising the parking rates, which we're going to do tonight most likely. Gate access control, which I know he's working on, because I spoke with him. The whole idea of beach tents. I'm not willing to see the idea that you park in Panera Bread and walk over. You don't cross that property. And Dave Gaddis reminded me of something I should have known all along, which is beach tents. In New Jersey, where I grew up, you know, a little badge that says you're a resident. And the sheriff, or they don't use the sheriff, they use the local police force. And he comes around, we can get on the beach, or if you're, some places just have badge checkers. We're going to have to spend more money for security. We cannot hold this to it the whole way. It hasn't gone away a year and a half. And I, as mayor, have been asking for this a year and a half. I've asked for this at least eight times. And not that I have any more power than anybody else here, but if the mayor of the city can't get this to go away, I don't know how it's going to work. It's gotten worse. We know this all the time, sunset, holidays, and weekends. We're going to have to spend some extra money. He came out with the rich shock memo, and I see him here, and I hope he'll speak tonight. Came out with his memo. He said, "We've got the money." This is the chairman of our finance department, finance committee. Spend the money. Because if you don't, I'm going to go with what Fred said earlier, Fred Riley. This is the Mr. Goodrich approach. You're going to pay them now, or you're going to pay them later. We do not want to do litigation on this thing. We do not want to lose our beach access. We don't want them to lock the gates, because then we're going to have to go, either as private citizens or as the city. We don't want to spend that money in the city, and you certainly don't want to spend that money as a private citizen. So I think the city needs to do something. And it's not just by request. 2003, I believe, it's 2003 or 2000, former Mayor Michael Kelly, representing the council, signed an interlocal agreement that requires us to do the security. It's not an asking. We must do it. As an attorney, if somebody broke a contract right now, I'd say we're in breach. We have not done all the security that we can do. Talking to Captain Liner isn't working. We need to do better. Maybe we need two police officers to run those certain events. Maybe we need a security detail. Gates, access cards, beach tents, all of these are viable ways of controlling this. Having buses jump all 30 people? Having van loads of people come in? Having the frat boys from University of Florida come and party? Why are these people want us on the beach? I understand. I sympathize with them. So I think we need to step it up. We have this, we have an agreement that we had signed that we were going to do the security. And the reason why those gates are there, and I didn't live here at the time, but the reason why those gates were there, surprise, surprise, people from outside the city were using the easements. So Bellar Shore took it upon themselves to put the gates there. That never used to have gates.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
We have so much emphasis on these three Bellar Shore's beach accesses. Why aren't we putting the same emphasis on Bellar Beach's accesses? We can't even, as residents, go park. And I can see people that live near me. We can't go park at Morgan Park, because there's not even a reserved spot for a resident in there, and it's full of non-residents. You cannot go to the beach in Bellar Beach, because there's no parking.
I said that earlier, though. That's because we took standard reenerrishment?
I know, but we...
Now that's a public beach.
Well, now, we, you know, since we're putting so much emphasis on beach access, we probably should revisit that as well. I'm just saying, from a resident's standpoint, they're forced to go to Bellar Shore's access because they can't access the wrong beach.
Could you, Fred Riley, I mean, we have a legal issue here. I don't know that we can exclude anyone from the Bellar Beach beaches at this point.
I'm going to answer a different question.
I want to answer that one.
He can answer that one. You were, before Councilwoman Shirley spoke, you had two issues that you were kind of discussing simultaneously. One is the Bellar Shore ordinance that relates to umbrellas and canopies, and then the other is how do you police the access points, okay? And you're bouncing back and forth between those two issues. I think what you really ought to do, and then this will go to the issue she's raised with Morgan Park, is you really ought to segregate each of them and address them one at a time. The one with, if I understood the comments from the council, the one related to the Bellar Shore ordinance and how that's going to be addressed is, there's, it sounds like consensus that city manager Reeves will work with the mayor of Bellar Shore to see if that can get resolved. And so that one, it sounds to me is the direction that you want to go. The other two are, you know, are certainly something that you can address. And if the, Morgan Park is the one I'm the least familiar with, if that is a city park and the beach reenerrishment throws a condition in that you were probably obligated to comply with, but it's something you should at least consider further. The three beach accesses, though, the issue of how do you police that, I think, based on what I've read in the interlocal agreement, that probably should be a secondary discussion between you as the council, but also the other party to the interlocal agreement. And that, I would say, is a secondary issue that, you know, it's come time to address it. it. And I would encourage you to do so. So I, I mean, one thing that's been clear to me, and I don't live here, I live across the bridge, but I know I would never park in one of your lots other than this one. You know, there's a lot of people that are upset and rightfully so because, you know, they want to get what they intended to get when they purchased a home here. And, you know, in some ways you have kind of a unique situation with having the accesses basically put in trust for citizens and then having the interlocal agreement. And that's, you know, I would say, over time, a lot of things evolve. And what appeared to me as a person evaluating it is, over a period of time, your ability to use those has evolved. And to some extent, it should continue to evolve, although that doesn't mean relinquishing the rights that you have. It just means policing it a slightly different way, which I think is something that's probably in the cards.
I do want to hear it from the citizens. I agree, we have two separate issues, but they're intertwined because one is driving the other.
Absolutely.
So let's, I think we have pretty much consensus. I'm going to come to the citizens in one second. I just want to see where the council is at, and then the citizens can comment on the response to the new ordinance at Bel Air Shore. Okay, so for Bel Air Shore, if I hear everyone correctly, we want Lynn Reeves to, is that the city, okay? Again, everyone maintains their own personal rights. Lynn will express the official city view, as such that the city is an owner here. She will express the council's view. She will continue to work with Mayor Schmidt. She will seek an amicable solution, which is where we're heading right now. And she will report back to us as soon as possible on any discussions. We cannot have discussions amongst ourselves, so if necessary, we will call special council meeting. The 21st is looking encouraging that these do will change, and I don't think we need to probably do anything officially as a city, other than what we're just doing right now. Did I state that right? I'm seeing a nod of heads. Is everybody agreeing with that on that side? Yes.
Mayor, just a...
I'd like to add one thing.
Okay, Glenn.
Yeah, in the last council session, we talked about management expectations. And I don't think we've done a great job on this. This Bel Air Shore ordinance came out in 1617, this one, we had seen the airwaves, and immediately social media lit up, and we are just now addressing it. It's the 6th of July, we're finally in touch, and two or three, I imagine, there's quite a few people with active mood there. We came here tonight specifically to hear about what the city was doing on this. I think the expectation of residents is that they kind of expect that the city to take the lead on this. And so while I respect everybody's point as residents, I mean, yeah, Bel Air Shore being intervened by this thing, the social media is lit up, but I think we're moving in the right direction by having one voice. I think we need the city manager speaking for Bel Air Beach. Now, the thing we need to add to that is, that you need a change in aspect of this, that maybe Jay Ginnis can have a side log and leave it aside, but as soon as any progress is made, it's time to keep the residents and the council on time and what progress to be made or whatever setbacks. And just like Jay Ginnis brought up, well, what's the plan B for Miller Beach to demonstrate to Bel Air Shore? And we're working with them, you know, we have a standing role and we're their ally and we're trying to work in the same direction, but at the same time, have a backup plan if this thing goes south or doesn't, we can't come to a final agreement and resolution on how the individualities match up. And that's all I had. Thank you.
And I think that's somewhat of what I was saying. In other words, you're going to keep us informed. Again, there can't be cross talk amongst the people on the council, but we can work through you, again, with our opinions, and that's that.
Well, Mayor, just a, in that discussion, the beach access, they're taking care of, Commissioner Bloom also talked to me about how we can control it, and I think we just need to take that.
I'm going to compartmentalize this because Fred Riley's point is correct. We're talking about two separations. I want your, the council's agreement on part one, which is, I think, which is, like I said, you're representing the city's official position. Remember, the city owns 12 lots here, you know, with parks, city hall and everything else. So the city's a big property owner. So this is the city's response, okay? But the city's not legally representing the citizens. It's kind of a dicey situation, but that's the way I see it. That's where our, we're part of that council. Everybody's in agreement. Okay, now, on just the issue of the response to Bel Air Shore, not how we're going to control beach access, I will hear everyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Shad. And we're going to do the next part in a second. So if you have issues on how to control it, that's with the next piece.
I'll be brief because I've spoken on this a number of times. And regarding the access, at the last month's work session, I gave the city three concrete recommendations as how I think we can control the access. So I'm not going to spend any more time on that. What I want to do really is speak to the citizens here, because this has got to be a citizen movement.
Mr. Shad, please, it has to be within two inches of that, my dear.
It has to be a citizen movement. I'm not a lawyer, but I've done a lot of research on this. And what concerns me is, it's kind of like Neville Chamberlain piece in our time, and that didn't work out so well. It really didn't. And Bel Air Shore had a Bel Air Shore council meeting, we weren't invited. So Bel Air Shore, in my humble opinion, is going to do what Bel Air Shore wants to do. I've lived here for 10 years, I've been beating this drum for 10 years, and nothing's happened. So I think now the citizens have got to take action here. Do your research, and here's what I have a real heartburn with. And if you don't know what these up here say, you need to, okay? I know in front of my access at Tall Street, I live on 13th Street, I know Mr. Bloom owns 21 feet of land. But the 21, but after the 21 feet westward to the water is public property. And I'm not going to have him tell me that I can't use that land. I can't put my umbrella up, I can't bring my papacore down there. It'd be no, it'd be the same as a waterfront owner on the Intercoastal Waterway saying, you can't run your boat in front of my house. So I would recommend you do your research, contact your congressman, and we have got to be united because at the end of the day, Bel Air Beach can only do so much, but we as the citizens have quite a bit more rights. So make sure you understand exactly where that beach line is, okay? So I'm going to ask, I'm calling on the city of Bel Air Beach tonight to get with the city of Bel Air Shore, have them take down that sign. Because they have no right to tell me what I can do on public land. If you want to look this up in the Florida Constitution, it's well documented what it means for public land. Secondly, the Supreme Court has ruled and established that the sand that washes up from adjacent beach re-nourishment does not belong to the homeowners. And for those people who've lived here for many years, you remember when there was no beach. So I would say, and I would take it to a court of law, they don't own any of that sand because they benefited from beach re-nourishment that's taken on both ends, okay? So I'm just telling you as citizens, I'm not telling you, of course, wrong choice of words, I'm encouraging you, our city can only do so much or may only be willing to do so much. But we as the citizens have a lot of opportunity and a lot of ways that we can go with this if we unite and do it right. So it's time for Bel Air Beach to do its job and regulate, control and enforce the security of our beach accesses. And it's time that we as the citizens get smarter and stand up for what is, I think, the biggest single benefit we have, being living here in Bel Air Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Other citizens? Yes, Mr. Hanson.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I concur with what Rick said, but it's up to the citizens. And probably the thing that would scare the daylights out of them is the whole slew of us showed up July 21st. But I have a question, and it's a simple question, that apparently there was a compromise suggested. Apparently, the city council knows what this suggestion is, but we the citizens do not know what it is. So I'm asking, what was the compromise or offer that the city presented to Bel Air Shore that was rejected outright? We need to be informed, too. Somebody up here said that there was, they outright rejected an offer of some kind of solution.
Mr. Hanson, I'm going to ask if Fred Riley wants to add, so there can't be cross talk between some people. I'm addressing the council.
Okay, that's fine. And I will, I will ask that people address that after you finish, okay?
All right. The other issue is, as you stated in your comments, we've been dealing with this for, what, a year and a half? But this, folks, is not the only issue that takes forever to get fixed. We drag our anchor, we drag our anchor, we drag our anchor, and we don't get anywhere. And we're all stuck. We're going in circles, it takes forever. One thing I would say about the parking lots that we maintain, I made this suggestion last month, we got signs that says parking by permit, people stub their nose in that. I suggested, as some others did, you put no tollways zone signs in there, and the toll company comes and gets them. You tell the sheriff at 491,000 plus a year, we don't go looking for you on the beach to tell you you're really going to be parked, right? The dead gum ticket. We pay you to do a job, it's in black and white. If you know decal, no parking. And by the way, sheriff wants 2.6% more next year, that's over a half million dollars. I'm not fussing at the sheriff, the sheriffs do a good job, but the latitude needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Yes, man, back part. Mr. Riley, if you would please address that after the citizen comments, okay? Thank you. If you care to, I can't afford you to.
I would like to ask.
No, that's fine. Thank you. We just used the time to speak with the city attorney. Go ahead.
Jules Chandler, 3207 Hibiscus Drive West. In listening to, and everybody's, I live on the beach, I don't even go to the beach, but I understand the frustration. I commend council members who agreed to have Lynn speak. You're very level-headed, calm, and that's what they need. I know that, it seems like a lot of people are very, very passionate about this, and I understand that. But I personally don't think that coming at them, you know, with a fist showing is going to rectify the situation. I think talking with them in a calm way, taking the first step, and then seeing, you've got to break it down. You just can't, in my opinion, you just can't go at them, you know, with your pistol cocked, ready to, you know, go, you don't agree with me and I'm going to, I'm going to fight you about this. You catch more flies than honey. That old saying proves true. I like the tollway zone. My question would be, or something to think about, would that be a shared cost? Would that be something that just Bel Air Beach would pay for? Or is that something that, because it sounds like Bel Air Shore doesn't want just anybody going there. But anybody can go there, it's a public beach. I mean, somebody can walk the bridge and go there if they want to, there's no way they can stop them from doing that. We may not like that, but it is a public beach, parts of it, according to Bel Air Shore. But we want to be good neighbors. We don't want to screw up our relationship with them. Don't they give us access to use these? I mean, they, couldn't they come back and say to us, I'm sorry, you can't use this at all? They can't do that?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I'll build that idea.
Okay. I'm glad I didn't know. But I thought that Glenn Gunn, council member, vice mayor, Glenn Gunn spoke very well addressing this issue as well. So I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. With council permission, I just want to clear something up. There's a piece of misinformation there, and I want to address it. It is not a public beach at the access points, it is private beach. I have a copy of the D, Patty Gentry has a copy of, I got it from Patty Gentry, thank you Patty, and I think everybody in the city's going to want a copy soon. You might want to just post them seriously on website. You will see that those give you the access to those Eastmans and no one else. They are not eligible for any city. You can go to the beach, Ms. Chandler, if you're walking from Indian Rocks or you come all the way down from there. So if you're walking along that state area, that is, you're absolutely correct, that's free, but you cannot cross our parking lot. That's private property. We'd just like crossing that homeowner next door trespassing. And maybe we should start trespassing people. Maybe we should start arresting people. I don't know, because you don't have the right to use it under any circumstances. You don't even have the right to put your car in there and take a quick picture. You don't have the right to watch sunset, only our residents. This is ours, folks. And I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm greedy, I'm not going to share it with anybody. But I bought my house here, I bought my property, I looked that up and I said, I've got perpetual easement here to use my property, to use this property. It's a private, private access. How don't you get to the water? Anybody can use that. But no, you can't come in, you can't park and walk across. That's not correct. So I hope I cleared that up. Yes, thank you. I got a thumbs up. Yes, sir. By the way, I've only talked about the three beach accesses, folks. Remember, Bel Air Beach is wide open, okay? Anyone can use Bel Air Beach.
My name is Roger Sackel-Caverson, I'm at 121st Street. I'm a little perplexed here. I did a lot of research also. It's my understanding from all of my research that the mean high tide watermark belongs to the federal government, it is. And I'm not certain how we define mean high tide watermark. But when I walked the beach and I seen seaweed up against a lot of the barrier walls, I take it that that barrier wall down to wherever the tide mark is for that point in time is federal property. Access to it is something else. But I, I as a citizen can do whatever I want unless it's a violation of federal law between that high tide watermark and where the water is. I was, I come from the Northeast, and this has been an issue like on Cape Cod and other places where we have fairly large residents. And this fight has been going on there for years. But when the fight has ended, I have all the access right I want to walk in front of the built wall or any other place on that scene, and they can't do anything about it. They maintain it, they take the seaweed off, they fluff it out, they do all those other things, but they still don't own it. So I don't understand personally over here what this erosion line is, because as far as I'm concerned, and as far as my reading documents, the high, mean high water watermark is the point of ownership. And if I'm looking at seaweed against someone's stone wall out there, hey, I can do whatever I want between that seaweed and where the water is at this point. When I was down at 94th Base, we drove our vehicles on that beach, any place we wanted, irrespective of where the hotels were and everything else. When I'm at Cape Cod or on any beaches, I can put my blanket or whatever else I wanted on that property and they couldn't do anything about it.
Sir, the finest, the finest...
Thank you. I just wanted to make my point of what I'm...
With council's permission, I will answer your question. Okay, permit me, I will answer your question because I can give you a very quick answer that I think helps her understand. I'll need council's permission to do that. May I? Okay, the erosion, I'm going to get right back to you in a second. I just want to explain this gentleman's question, make figure to other people's thinking. The mean high tide mark, sir, what you're speaking about is what is in the legislation, okay? And again, in our Gulf of Mexico situation, anything westward of the mean high tide level, which is generally where the seaweed comes up, okay? That is, belongs to the state of Florida for use by all citizens, okay? You don't have a right to go across private property to get to it, though. Anything eastward of that, okay, which is going towards people's houses... Anything eastward of that, okay, which is going towards people's houses, that is private property. Now, the erosion control line and the mean high tide line in Pinellas County are the same thing. In order for a mean, and this gets very complicated, but in order for a mean high tide line to become an erosion control line, there has to be nineteen years of study, it has to go to a, a, an engineering study, survey, goes to the governor. They did that, it's all been done for Pinellas County. So when you see on these charts, the erosion control line, that is synonymous with mean high tide, and that will never change. So no matter how much sand is added or subtracted, that stays the same. So when you see that, and that erosion control line is there, and you won't see it in the sand, you kinda have to pace it off. If you're on the other side, okay, if you're on the other side, towards someone's house, that would be a problem. Okay, you're actually on somebody's property. Now, I'm not gonna get into a whole big legal thing. You could argue customary use, and that we did it this way for a hundred years, and I know Rick Shaw knows about this. That is, has to be determined by a judge. That's not the city, that's a judge. And you have to do it parcel per parcel. That was a hundred thousand I was telling you about. That was supposed for one parcel in six years for a beach. So I just wanted to add that. Ma'am, I think you're next, and then I have this gentleman in the middle. Would that answer your question?
Okay.
Vivian Oliva, one eleven Gulf Boulevard, Bella Beach. I know some people have been here twenty years. I've been here since I was six years old. I've been here over fifty years. I saw Bella Beach Incorporated in nineteen fifty. We already had our beach house here. I saw Bella Shore come to an accord at that time. There were, right now, we have sixty-one property, properties in this, in that beach. At that time, there couldn't have been a dozen. And there was an accord reached, and that accord was those three Eastmans would be in perpetuity. They would be unencumbered, and they were for the use of accessing, bathing, and enjoying the beachfront. The high tide mark at that time, as we frolicked in the dunes and the sea oats that existed prior to the seawall that was put in in the mid-fifties, later destroyed by Hurricane Elena, reinstalled is what caused the erosion of a, of a beach that was more than half a football length from the dunes. So when people are talking to me about the history here, I remember when there were only two policemen in Largo, people. There were no policemen here. My father would bring him a box of cigars, a bottle of scotch, invite him over for dinner. It was an officer and a cab, and a store. We had a police force here, which we voted on, those of us who were here at that time, as we saw our area grow. It was voted out, I must say. I felt really bad about that, because we had been here so long, and they were very, very good at doing the job. They had a vested interest. It's a situation that you say, I say to myself, you know, you've lived too damn long. You've lived long enough to know the history, to know who started this, to know when it was called, pardon me, the Tenny subdivision.
Ma'am, we have time, um, I, I really wanna hear what you have to say. Um, thank you most, and I couldn't ask for it, you have three more minutes, okay? How did you?
When we started, it was the Tenny subdivision. It was developed by Kirkby, who developed Bella Estates, by the way, and A.L. Cuesta, who was the owner of the largest cigar company in Tampa. He was one of the ones with Tenny who developed this. So it was the Tenny subdivision till nineteen fifty, when it became Bella Beach. So when I listen to all of this, and I remember the cooperation of all the people who lived here, and we've come to this, to find you over an umbrella that will keep you from getting skin cancer being burned. I remember the situation of a previous mayor from Bella Shores who had a mother and her daughter arrested for drinking a cup of coffee on the beach. We're indeed doo-doo people. We really are. And if I sound passionate, I am. I've seen the very thing my parents bought and paid for, and then I bought from my parents to make my home. I've seen it go down the toilet piece by piece. I remember the Morgan Street situation, when they said, whoa, whoa, we need re-nourishment. I kept saying, don't do that. This city fought to be a private beach. We sued the state of Florida. We built the first bridge. We built it, the city. That's why we had tokens that the, that the people in the city could use. So I've seen a lot, and it's extremely disconcerting to see that this issue with Bella Shores just continues and continues. So I don't know really what else to say, but I did, I mean, I was really gonna call everybody. But I hear, I have said what I have to say. The history of this area is too important just to let it go and not preserve the beauty, the tranquility, and the cooperation that existed here by the families that came here and made a home. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, sir.
So, uh, my name's Ronny, I live on one zero three fifteen street. And first off, thank you for tackling all this, it's a big job, I know. And Lynn, I spoke to you earlier about some of my ideas. But you know, after thinking about, you know, customary uses, the mayor had mentioned unofficially, of course, um, that's basically where, hey, all the people have used umbrellas or tents on the beach or chairs. So customary use means you should be able to still do that, okay? Um, but one thing that after listening to everybody talk, we haven't really talked about outreach. And why not form a committee with the town of Bella Shores to come up with some solutions together? Possibly in education, maybe signage at each of the access points, saying, hey, this is a private beach, treat it with respect. How about something that says, to show them that we do care about their situation too, because if I lived on the beach, I wouldn't want somebody popping my chair and leaving the coconut bones on twelve, which I saw numerous times. So maybe that's an angle we should approach. And like I told Lynn, all volunteer for whatever. But again, I think we need to, send me an attacking, work one community with them, even though they got bigger houses than I do. Um, I know Ryan Howard said I'd leave once, so that was cool. But why not reach out and with a committee? Work with them, come up with solutions together. That's, I think, the way to go. Maybe I'm wrong, but I want my property value to continue to go up. And that, for it to go up, you're gonna have to have beach access. And you're gonna have, have to have a good relationship with those folks. So that's all I gotta say, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have our citizens, I have heard, and this is again on the response, not on the solutions to keeping the outsiders outside. See no more, yes, I see one more hand, sir.
Yeah, I'm Bill Muddlin, thirty-one twenty-one, Hibiscus Drive West.
Bill, if you'd do me a favor, get real close to that microphone, because I can barely hear you, I'm ten feet from it.
Yeah, I'm Bill Muddlin, thirty-one twenty-one, Hibiscus Drive West. I'm quite concerned about access, not just for the Bella Shore area. I run that beach, I run on the roads, I see the people coming in and out of there. It's always a pain, you can ask them to leave, they're not going to. People are parking wherever they want to. My wife's at Publix. She heard the cashier say, oh, just find places that shutters on it, they're closed up for the winter, park in their drive, we can go out to the beach. Five years ago, we moved here, bought our place. We could go out on the beach, I might not see it on the first, doesn't matter if it was a weekend or daytime, middle of the week. Now, I can't even get on the beach. The parking lot for the Marina, way over a pound. This, the people that are coming in, they don't care about the beach, they don't pay taxes here, they don't have to do anything. Myself, my wife, my neighbors, we're working with the lady from the booth coming in the non-able, we're picking up trash out there all the time. Saturday morning, one dumpster, a mitts full, one can full. She's been taking all the trash up her dumpster, every week, we go out there, fill them up, put them in her place. They don't appreciate it, but we appreciate it out there. You're gonna jack up the prices, make it fifty bucks a day. I can't believe that the people are coming there and they're doing the things they're doing. They do pull in buses. We've seen the buses pull in, we've seen the vans pull in. The park, they pull into the non-parking line. So I think the beach access thing is kind of a whole Bella Beach, not just the Bella Shores. How long we have to wait before we can stop allowing everybody on the beach after what we did with the, after government, to allow them to replant some trees? Is it one year, three years, five years? Or is this just a forever thing that we stuck with? Because if it's only a couple of years, then we, we can handle that, take no more beach sand from anybody out there, just like do it, it's going to do. Right now, most of our beaches up in Clearwater, and the other part fits in Bella Shores. Our beaches come right down. We measured it with a laser, it's untransient. We have two hundred eighty-seven feet from non-able access to the waterline, and right now, we have less than a hundred. It's happening pretty fast, but it's going to do the pervert. I'd love to see them stop from letting them on the beach anywhere if they don't have something that's paying more than just the parking fee. They're gonna come through that access by the non-able? urge them up to get on the beach? Okay, make them pay, because we're the ones that are paying for it.
Thanks, thank you, sir. We have citizen comments on this issue now. We'll come back to council, we've heard the citizens. Um, I brought up the issue, I don't think, I know Fred Riley hasn't had a chance to look into it, but I do bring up this issue about how long we have to wait on the sand. I don't know if you've had a chance to do it, um, but I think it's something you do have to look at. During the process of getting those Eastman, um, signups right now to do another renaissance, so... I know, I remember speaking with Jolie earlier on a work session, as I recall, she's nodding, and she remembers it too. And we said, well, maybe we can help kids in this time. Because, you know, this access issue, it's all, it's, it's not only in Bella Shore, but we're also having, I'm hearing that we can't even get on our own beaches. I mean, I don't use that area, I'm privileged to live right across the street from beach access in Bella Shore, but, um, it's long, our own residents can't get there. Mr. Riley, did you wanna answer if it's a citizen question? I don't know if you've done any research on how long we're tied in under these prior agreements, under these prior, uh, agreements for sand, and when should we be going into this new, new one?
I'm gonna answer a different question than what I have.
You'll do that.
That one's a matter of what the contract calls for, and I, I am left to review it, so off the top of my head, I can't give you an answer. Um, that, I'm, I'm confident, Lynn, Patty can get, get me the contract, and I'll look at it and, um, give you an answer on that one. The, the other question that was raised about the, uh, what was rejected out of hand, that, that's your characterization. I, I will soften it a little bit. I, in analyzing, uh, the Bella Shore, uh, new ordinance, there's, there's subsection ten, which is added. Subsection ten included a reference to the beach. In the other, uh, code provisions related to beach access and that sort of thing, it repeatedly refers to beach and beach access. So my legal position was that by only referring to beach in subsection ten, they were not including beach access. And that, to me, is a very logical, uh, construction argument that you would make. That's the argument that I made to the, the town's attorney, and she, uh, listened intently and said, I don't see it that way. And, you know, that's a difference of two lawyers having a different point of view, and that's what ultimately you go to court over, is when you have two different points of view. But there, there was no, uh, animosity in it. It was two lawyers that had different interpretations of the same thing. And, you know, I think my interpretation's right, I'm sure she thinks hers is correct. But that goes to the issue of what should be done next, which in my opinion, I, I won't deviate from what I said earlier. Uh, you should have the city manager proceed to try and work with them to see what we can do. And absent getting a solution that way, then you should consider a, uh, mediation through chapter one sixty-four between two governments.
And I just wanna add to what you just said. It wasn't an offer, or offer in any formal legal sense, it was a discussion between the two attorneys, there was no offer. Again, the city of Bella Shore, this, I'm sorry, the city of Bella Beach, has no right to make a deal on the citizens' behalf, okay? So each of you, again, your piece of the center line, own a right there. So we're not gonna make any deals on anyone's behalf. But we think that settling it the way that we talked about, we'll settle it for everyone's behalf. And if that's not satisfactory, then individuals can pursue whatever remedy they wish.
The, the discussion I had with their town's attorney was, was towards how do you interpret this? And the secondary question is, how are you going to enforce it? Because the conversation was had, I wanna say about, um, six days ago, and, you know, my concern, as, as was the concern of others, is what do you expect will take place over the next, uh, the upcoming holiday weekend? So it was, it was more, you know, how, how did your council look at this? And, uh, how, how do you intend to enforce it? And thankfully, they've, um, not enforced it vigorously, and, and here we are.
So I summarized before what the council's consensus position is, which is essential, that the city of Bella Beach is going to maintain, uh, a consultation and a connection with Mayor Schmidt through Lynn Reeves. The emphasis being on a amicable solution to all of this. And we're going to give them until the twenty-first of their meeting, uh, which is twenty-first of July in Bella Shore, to basically, our desire is to basically scrap that ordinance, uh, as it affects us. And, um, city manager will convey that information and report back to us immediately on any changes or anything that he finds out. There has been a non-enforcement agreement, kind of, again, this is informal, but there's a non-enforcement agreement. I'm glad to hear that no one's been harassed by anyone, and I think Pete Sheriff is on board with that, so it shouldn't happen. But if it does, you contact Lynn Reeves, and you let him know that there's a problem there, okay? In terms of fighting for the individual rights, all of the citizens have those individual rights. The twenty-first meeting, uh, Rick Shaw said, let's go over there. It's so easy, you don't even have to go over there, it's a virtual meeting. The city of Bella Shore will post the access codes on their website. We did this last time, you go in via Zoom. There's a little button that says raise hand, you raise your hand at the appropriate time, and you speak with them. And I'm just gonna ask, since you're, you know, since you're gonna do that, then everybody, you know, really, let them know what you're thinking, okay? And the way everyone was tonight is absolutely excellent and professional, and that's what they need to hear, okay? This is the way to do it in city government, okay? There's no, yes, we're mad about it, but nobody's calling anybody names or anything like that. This is an absolute way to do it. So I encourage you to do that across the street, and I think we're gonna get a lot of results very quickly. And if we don't, and we'll be back in session. I will call, I'll let everybody know I have the authority as mayor to call a meeting solely. Lynn Reeves is gonna let me, well, Lynn Reeves and I are both gonna. Lynn Reeves is gonna let me, well, Lynn Reeves and I are both gonna be there, so again, I'm going as a private citizen. We'll all know what happened, and if I don't think it's satisfactory, next morning, Lynn and I will be speaking, and I will probably call a council meeting, and we will be back together again for more, you know, the next step in terms of the response, and everybody will be delighted to come to that. In the meantime, you're free to do whatever you want as citizens, okay? Council, did I say that right, is everybody in agreement? Seeing how many kids. Okay, so that's that portion of it. And the second portion of this is what we were talking about, and I was taking notes as people were speaking and stuff that we've been talking about for a while. Ideas on how to control access, to make sure that only Bellar Beach residents are using the three easements. Fred Riley, let's go and take a look in terms of, do you have any options in terms of restricting people on Bellar Beach? I don't think right now we do, but maybe in the future, yes. Okay, so he's gonna look at that, and let's see if we're doing this, this stuff with the sand right now, okay? But, for ideas, what has been thrown out, and council has all spoken about this in work sessions already, and I think we're pretty much in agreement. Towing, raising the parking rig, which we're gonna deal with later on today. Electronic gate control, that's for cars, and also for individuals, we can give you a pass key, or a pass card, electronic thing, and you'll go, simply go through the gate, and that's it, don't let anybody in who doesn't follow up there. Beach tags, resident beach tags, which you'll wear a little times, this way when the sheriff, sheriff is not gonna sit here and say where you live. So if you have a beach tag, you're good, you can be on our sand and up to our erosion controlling, if not, you can't be there. And, um, stop the, I also heard, stop with the warnings, we said that last time, stop with the warnings, step up sheriff patrol, maybe adding individual, uh, individual patrols, extra controls during the weekend. Now, we've talked about this, we've talked about it since May, some of this stuff is gonna come back over here. I'm not gonna accept talking to anybody anymore as a solution personally, okay? I'm not. So, what are we gonna do as a city to show Bellar Shore and to show our residents that we're gonna fight for their rights? Because this lady said it so perfectly, I mean, this is our stuff. And I'm not giving it up, and I hope nobody else does either. I'm not diminished by expectations. I pull up here expecting to have a private beach, and I want it. I want my MTV on, they was gonna say. So I'm opening this up to anybody who wants to, these ideas are before, and if anybody else has any other ideas, what are the ideas that I would like to tell the city manager tonight? Here's what we want to do, at least, I know some of this he's already doing, I've had conversations. He's, I know he's looking into gate controls and stuff like this, but what do we want him to do as a council right now? And we, and he, he can tell Bellar Shore that, and he goes across the street. Council?
Yeah, I'd like to, and ask a couple of questions, and actually, to the city manager, Lynn Reeves. She might understand, since the Bellar, since Bellar Shore owns those accesses, they would need to be the ones to decide if they wanna put up a tow sign and implement that. Yes, we can approach that with them and share the cost and stuff, but it's not like we can simply go in there and put up a tow, you know, sign that there's any tow away. That's Bellar Shore's property. Also, to my understanding, Bellar Shore directs the sheriff in what they knew on, in those beach accesses. Whether they wanna take it on, whatever, that's up to the sheriff of Bellar Shore, since they own that property. Now, Fred, and I know when we meet with the mayor of Bellar Shore, you can have those discussions on how we can assist, but we can't just make decisions on those things. We need to back to what, what they'll be a good neighbor and that kind of stuff. Am I correct that they make those two decisions?
Yes, it's, it's their property, they would have to, you know, we can suggest to them. And I know they have some interest in talking to one of the commissioners, they have some interest in looking at how to control the access, whether you put a, a padlock on it, or, uh, and, you know, residents will have to have a key to it, or put a passcode on it. We're looking into what the cost of electronic gates with some kind of card system. So there's several options that, that we'll talk to them further about, but you're correct that, you know, we can tell the sheriff, as, as I did on the weekend on Friday night, I was at all the accesses, and, you know, I had a discussion today with the patrol captain, just as an example. There were five cars in 12th Street at a little after seven o'clock on Friday night, that had no beach sticker, and the deputy just pulled out. We're gonna get that clarified, uh, 'cause that, that wasn't correct. And when I talked to Captain Lozares today, patrol captain, uh, he's gonna have that discussion with the deputies. You should at least given them a warning.
Give a ticket.
No paper on it, you know, it's their discretion, but they should have given them at least a warning, and if it happens again, then they get a ticket. However they wanna do it, I don't, I, I mean, that's up to the sheriff, but, uh, we, we, we're gonna have some more discussion about that. Part of the problem is, three accesses, which one do you hit at sunset? You may not be able to hit them all. Sixth Street that night had, I think, just three cars. 12th Street had five, and 19th that night didn't have any, so, I guess nobody wanted to go down.
They go down, now that you told them.
So, I had one other thing too. Looking at, looking at those gates, electronic gates or whatever, we need to use a code or something to get into it. Is anyone really concerned about backing up traffic, don't go over? You don't have a lane to pull in there, and wait to see if the next person in the gate opens the parking lot? I mean, that's something we need to really consider before we look at that.
Well, we need to, I, I think we need to start the process of looking at options, and, you know, the option, you know, as an example, electronic gate, I can tell you from experience in some places, depending on the type of gate, electronic mechanism, that could cost you fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, you know, with the card reader and all this computer stuff. And that would be a problem, turning in. But, on the other hand, every house in Bellar Shore has a gate, good thing. I did it in their driveway, so I don't expect it to be anything different.
Can I just make a couple of points as, well, this discussion is great, it's kind of a meat point, because what I hear is, we all have these wonderful ideas, doesn't matter, because Bellar Shore has to give authorization for any of this to be done. So, so I think, back to Fred, is, a hand is, how do we handle the initial code that they just passed about the umbrellas? That's probably item number one. Item number two is, how are we, and I, I see this different than Lynn talking to mayor, the mayor of Bellar Shore's. I see it as, we need, we need a committee of a couple, and maybe it can only be one, council member from Bellar Shore's, council member from Bellar Beach, some residents together to meet and come up with how do we control access and, and have a plan? Because you could spend days getting all these security things lined up, and, and it's a waste of time, because they're not gonna allow a gated, maybe they're not gonna allow a gated.
Well, no, they, they, one of their commissioners did bring.
One of the commissioners, but you've gotta get consensus, right? And you've gotta get consensus from us, and you've gotta get, you know, my point being is, there's a lot of waste of time right now. Let's stick with dealing with the umbrella issue, and then two, how do we get a small committee together that, that works just that? Rather than having all this open discussion, and we don't know if we can do any of these things, because we gotta get approval from them. Like, you know, a simple one hitter is that tow way, that is so simple. If you can get the mayor of Bellar Shore's to agree to that at their council meeting, it doesn't cost us anything. You call the tow company, they put the signs up, we're done, we don't have to worry about anything. That's the easiest first step, and, you know, we're spending a lot of time on things we can't do anything about right now. So, in an effort to kind of tackle this agenda, we need to move on, I think.
I'm with Joey, I totally agree. I think, first off, I think the gate is, I think that's going zero to sixty, when we haven't explored zero, or one, or two, or three. So we need to, I think what we need to do, Lynn, is go talk to them and say, "A, we don't like this umbrella agreement, so we want to figure out a way to get rid of it. Here are some of our ideas on how to control the access points, but obviously, we need your agreement." And I think it's more just a discussion. I don't know if we need to have a committee just yet, I think first step, you talk, we're unhappy, but we're willing to work and fix the problem, so your residents are happier with the beach situation and not penalize us when it's not for us. So I think we need to start that, and I agree, I think we need to move on to this massive agenda before my kids graduate their school.
Okay, we have consensus, and so Lynn Reeves, you're gonna start investigating, you have to start investigating this, I agree. Bellar Shore has to give permission, but by the same token, if they refuse, then we need to document this, because we do have a security requirement to that in our local agreement, Fred knows what I'm speaking about. And I don't want them coming back and saying, "You didn't do your job," so, you know, unless they, "You, our city, didn't do our job." So we'll document what we're suggesting, if they say, "No, no, no, everything," then it's like, "Well, what do you want us to do, guys?" You know, we're listening to suggestions from them too, but, you know, we're, we're working here, we, you know, we've given a whole bunch of suggestions, let's look into it, let's start. We've talked about this long enough, we've talked about this in May, let's start getting prices, let's start to see what this stuff is. And then you can propose it, and let's see what kind of reaction we get. They don't want these outsiders there either, we have a common enemy, so let's get these people out of here. And I said it last time, everybody laughed. Say again, to the extent that we control that, because the way I read that thing, we control the security. Sheriffs, they're nice people, and they're wonderful people, stop being so nice, start giving tickets. We, we need to give these people tickets and get out of there. No more warnings, no more going on the beach looking for the, the parking guy, that's crazy.
I think we need a slogan, like, you know, it's gonna be badges, and, you know, if you get your parking towel, it's like, what, stick it or ticket? Stick it on your car, forget a ticket, stick it or give it.
I, I would also like that. Uh, as far as the beach tags go, I know that nobody really wants to wear them, but on the other hand, if, if we all have them, have them in our hand, our own chain, whatever, if we have those, well then, the residents of Bellar Shore would clearly see that we're not the problem. So, it may be just something temporary, but, uh, then again, it may be something that we enjoy and want to proudly carry around. Well, we're actually on our own beaches, we're certainly healthy, so we've been applied, and we're gonna live.
It's the only way they can do it, there's no way they're gonna go up and ask, "Where do you live?", and you don't have to carry that gate. And yes, to me, it was a badge of honor to have it in certain communities, because in certain places in New Jersey, you were something if you had that tag, that beach tag from that community. So, there's no reason we can't do that, and keep some people out, so, that don't belong there. We just want the people who belong there, we want our folks to enjoy it, and we pay for it, and we're paying for it, we maintain those beaches.
I understand the badge idea, but, I mean, off my kids, I'm not gonna walk around with a chain and a vinyl badge, but hey, I will hang it for my own. So I'm just saying. I'm not walking around with a badge.
In New Jersey, we clip it to the beach bag, so you can, as long as the sheriff gets it, then you have a badge.
I'm saying, I'm not walking around with like, a badge on, through my channels.
Okay, so we have consensus, we know where we're at, right? We can move on to the next item, everybody, we're good? Okay, Lynn, we'll be looking for your report back, okay? Thank you. And if you need a, if you need a meeting, you let me know. All right, I think we skipped fifteen, so now we go to sixteen, which is consideration of appointment of alternate board adjustment member, John J. Hayes, the board member, we have a vacancy. This is a council appointment of board member, John J. Hayes. Do I have a motion?
I will.
And a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, is that Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gaddis here on the floor.
Um, we've got an opening, and we have, and tell everybody who is willing to fill that void.
Thank you. I only have one question for the city clerk. Was his position advertised, or was he the only applicant?
We have that position advertised for a month, and we haven't had any applications, no.
So there was no other application that was on the website during the entire vacancy of this vacancy?
Good.
For me, I'm in favor. Anybody else have any discussion? Is Mr. Hayes here?
Mr. Hayes is out of town.
He's out of town, okay, well, there's no meeting, so he'll be, he'll be good here. Um, I'll call it to a vote, Patty, we normally do this with a paper vote, I, it's silly, I mean, can we just do a voice vote? You want to call it? Okay, so this is, this is a link for the question. Consideration of appointment of alternate board adjustment member, John J. Hayes, to the board membership.
Okay.
For board, uh, board adjustment, a yes vote is to appoint him, right?
Captain Rubeen?
Aye.
Captain Mr. Gaddis?
Aye.
Captain Mr. Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Manza, do you wanna do public comments?
Uh, yes, I will, that's why I asked if he was there too, but is there, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Riley, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? If there'd be no public comments, we'll continue with the vote, we have three, five votes so far.
Did I call Captain Shirley?
Even Gaddis and Shirley.
Um, council member Spoke?
Yes.
Council member Archie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero, congratulations, Mr. Hayes, he's now a permanent member, and we'll continue the advertisement, please, because now we need to fill this alternate spot. I know we got off this page, but we have to come back to it for, um, fifteen later. Oh. I have to read this whole thing, right? I think I do. Okay, here we go. Consideration of ordinance twenty dash zero two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bellar Beach, order relating to five proposed charter amendments for submission to the referendum. Providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for amendments to article two, section two point zero two, article two, section two point zero four five A, article two, section two point zero six, article four, sections four point zero two and four point zero three, and article nine of the city charter, providing for five ballot titles, providing for city clerk to obtain Spanish language translation, providing for approval by the majority electors voting on November third, twenty twenty, general municipal election ballot, providing for a notice of an advertisement of the referendum election to be published in accordance with state Florida election code. Providing that upon adoption of this ordinance, the five proposed charter amendments shall be submitted to qualified electors of the city of Bellar Beach, Florida, on the November third, twenty twenty, general municipal election ballot, and shall become effective as provided by law. Providing for the city clerk to confirm and quantify the charter amendments, charter if approved. Providing for appealed ordinances in conflict here, in conflict here with, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and providing for an effective dates proposed charter amendments, this is the first reading, I have to give that three more times before it expires. Um, proposed charter amendments for November twenty twenty election ballot, that is the description. Do I have a motion? Martin Bean is making the motion.
Second.
And then Gaddis is second. Mr. Bean, you're on the floor. Council member Bean, on the second.
I don't have any questions on this particular one, I think I'm old enough, but again, I understand that there are any failings.
I'll hold back, does anybody else have any issues? Well, you know, I did. It's Riley, and we still have some issues. I think we can correct them tonight, I hope we can. As I remember this, and this is my memory, and my color-coded notes that I took, I think we still have some issues. And let me go through them one by one, and I think we have five members from the charter review committee here. So, if you'll just help me, if I got any of this wrong, um, we would have to make amendments to change this then. Actually, I don't think we have to make an amendment, because we're not changing the ordinance, we're, we're passing here, we'll change the coverage, it's correct, so let's go through it. I'm just gonna go, I'm, I'm not even gonna worry about what we put to the ordinance, I'm gonna go right to the charter amendments themselves. So charter amendment, section, um, article two, section two point zero two, election terms, it talks about the, um, and the final question, it talks about, this is a prohibition from anyone holding, it's term limits, uh, term more than two term limits. Over here, it doesn't have the effective date, do we need that, this question to you, do we need that on the ballot for the electors? Intent lets it begins after the next, starting with the next election. So, for example, Martin Bean is, is, uh, let's say he ran for reelection, that would be his second one, it would really only be his first one, as far as we're concerned, we're passing it now. That was the intent, I think, part committed by Dave Gaddis, and I, yes, I think that's.
The, it says with, uh, those city, or those council members, whose terms begin in twenty twenty-one.
Not on the question that's going on the ballot, I think. The question that goes on the ballot is what you have in the back part of this, right? That, this is, is, am I correct, that what the electors are going to see is, shall article two, section two point zero two of the charter title election terms be amended for the individual council members, including the mayor, from holding office for more than two consecutive terms? That's what's on the ballot, it doesn't say?
This is a philosophy dispute, or.
It's questions, not disputes. It's questions, not disputes.
Well, I'm just saying, you, you have a real challenge in stating concisely what the issue is. And if y'all want to put in there, that, make a clarification in the ballot question, or ballot title, that it begins after twenty twenty one, that's easily fixed.
I think that's what we discussed in the Charter Review Committee, but I'll refer to my colleagues.
I think, for clarification purposes, it might be helpful to put a date in there because if a resident, you know, votes in favor of this, and then, you know, say it's me, and I run for a third term.
Well, that's where the philosophy, to me, comes in.
I know. I mean, common sense tells you that, well, we didn't, this didn't get voted in until now, right? So why would anything that is sort of prior to now be effective?
Right, and I, I think, and I differ with some of the council members in approach slightly. I, I think you have to give, the citizens have to take some responsibility, too, and what, what you're approving is the amendment, it's, it's not the concise, concise explanation of it. And it's, you know, you do the best you can to concisely state the question, and, but, you know, I, I, if you read through these, you, it is very difficult to itemize every nuance of the, some of the amendments. Although this one's easily fixed by adding something that clarifies that in the ballot title, to, to make it clear that it's after twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's clear, I don't know if it would be clear to every resident, that's, that's, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate, you know?
I don't know if it'd be clear to any person, quite frankly, if you were on the charter, you know, committee, I mean, and here's why.
I think that the point is, you can't, nothing can be retroactive, so anything we vote on, even if it's tonight, something, you can't go, "Oh, that's retroactive to something we did," you know? To you holding on, it's a year ago. So, you know, that's where I'm going, that's what's clear, but.
Let me ask you a question, I'm starting a rub.
Well, please, stop.
We're, basically, we've made up our minds. We don't want anyone doing this for more than two consecutive terms. If we vote for this, even the way that it stands, if you're in your second term, we can't run a third. That's it. But because we've decided, as a council, we don't want that to happen anymore, and we're asking the people to agree with us. So, why wouldn't we, it would be wrong for us to make exceptions for ourselves, just because we've already ran two terms, and we wanna go for a third. That completely defeats the purpose of this, of this amendment.
So, here's my, that's my point. Jody Shirley's right. You're right. And, I mean, this, so, let's just say somebody digs in their heels, okay? You know, Jody, Jody goes for reelection, she wins, she's on her second one, she goes, "Uh, I like this job." And I'm gonna check down, it's not right there. She likes this job, she loves it, and, you know, three, four years after this one's done in twenty twenty one, okay? Um, you know, I'm not, I'm just, Jody, on this, you see, as an example, but she could dig in her heels and say, "That's lovely, brother, I like what you said." I, I, I agree, I think two terms is fully encapsulated, and that's it. And maybe we just leave it the way it is, and Fred, if, if you're comfortable with it, I mean, if somebody wants to make a big issue of it and sue, then they can do that, but as long as this is consensus, we should have a term. Yes, they could have to be terms if they want.
Well, could we just add something to that, including current, you know, positions held, or, you know, somehow clarify that? Because I'm indifferent on what the outcome is, right? But I just wanna make sure that we have a term limit there. So, if it affects us right now, partly, if it doesn't, you know, I don't know, I don't, it doesn't, I don't care either way.
Doesn't affect any of us.
Well, it will, but, you know, but to Dave Gaddis's point, I think you just clarified it for me, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, me, too.
Because you know what? It says here, for more than two consecutive terms, period. You can't do two consecutive terms. So, Jody, you can't do your third term.
Thank you. Thank you.
So no objection on that one for me. Okay, next one. This one, we haven't fixed yet. The next one is charter amendment, Article Two, Section Two Point Zero Four Five. Biggest thing I have, which was the presiding officer moving a, a motion, and it's not here. It's in the beginning, in your explanation, but it's not here on the charter amendment. We just have Robert's Rules of Order, but it doesn't talk about the charter member, the, the presiding officer moving a motion. The whole idea behind that is that, to pass the gavel thing, right now, I can't make a motion, I'm not gonna be the mayor for life either, okay? But if I wanna make a motion, this would allow me to pass it to Glenn Gunn, and sit down, you, you chair the meeting for that point, and I would be able to make that motion for the next three mayors, okay? So, that wasn't a term. I think it's.
Okay, you're asking about the ballot title, correct?
I'm asking about charter amendment, I'm on page six of this, this.
Okay, which is the ballot title, which is the question.
Right.
The ballot question doesn't have, have that in there.
Right.
Okay, and you, you would like to include it in it.
It passed it. That was, I mean, that was the biggest thing I put in, that was probably my single biggest thing in the council, that the charter committee liked, and I'd like to say it. It was a one A suggestion, it was, it was on the top of the hit, so it was supposed to be in our first thing, so I don't know why we're pulling it out at the recommendation of the charter committee, it should appear, so. It's supposed to be to handle it using Robert's Rules of Order as a guideline, also, I'm not sure which section it comes under, but permitting the presiding officer to move.
Okay, well, I'm just making a clarification. You want that clarification to be in the ballot title?
I think it passed it.
Okay.
I changed the charter.
I, I have a, maybe a dumb question, maybe I walked out the last election, I didn't amend it. Sometimes you start rooting for a word. But when I get my ballot, I'm gonna see the title, but then underneath it, is there more verage of what it's about, or is it just the title?
Just the title.
That's it? Okay, well, then, I understand where you're coming from, to make it a little bit more specific. Okay. I guess I have some questions.
Okay.
Can you correct that now? On the idea that now for this, I mean, well, can we just put it as amended? How does it accept, acceptable to say as amended? This is only a first reading, Fred can make the correction, and then, we still can pass this tonight, I'm on this tonight.
That's fine.
You can do that. Yeah, could. Yes, Patty's not saying it.
I'm looking at the last from Mr. Zabel, and can I show it to you, Fred?
I don't have it in front of me.
All right, can I show it to you for your opinion, on that, seeing what you're saying?
Well, the, the disconnect is between what's in the revised language for the amendment versus what's in the ballot question. That's, that's where we're at.
So my question there is, is that, what the committee, whatever the committee decided, the council can change that?
Yes, and I believe it was something to the effect, and, oh, exactly, it's something to the effect that, right now, the charter says that the mayor cannot move a motion, and that's not consistent with what most of the other communities do. The mayor can move a motion, but they have to pass the gavel. The idea is that the mayor can't make a motion, then control the discussion. It's just not appropriate. So, this says, the presiding officer, by doing that, if I turn over the gavel, again, I say, "Aye." The next mayor, the next three mayors, until it's good for ten years, the next three mayors turn over the gavel, and they can make a motion. Because by tonight, you hear, they say, "I can't make a motion, somebody else has to do it." It moves things along a little bit. So that, I think, I think that's how you recall the language, I, it's late, it's getting late, and I have to do that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at here.
So we'll just, can we just say that we'll change, that, through Patty, our, Patty Gaddis, our city clerk, will give you the exact language of her resolutions from the Charter Review Committee, exactly what they said?
Well, what, what you should do, I mean, you continue on and tell me the other things that you have.
I have one more thing.
And then you should approve this, and in, in between now and the second reading, there will be slight revisions, and you can approve the amended revisions. I mean, I'll tell you, I spent hours and hours and hours trying to make sure what, what was in that final version that I had was in this, and then writing the questions. So, I'm sorry, it's not the way you want it, it's not without effort.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, I just wanna make sure it reflects what the Charter Committee did, they put in four months of very hard work. This just happens to be my pet issue. I mean, so, only, and I'm not gonna be mayor for the next ten years, because I'd be termed out anyway in my next, what if I ran, but I don't wanna have the next three mayors saddled with this. There's really defect in our charter right now, because the other mayors will have to do this when they're lead mayors. Okay, that's all ahead, okay? So if, if we can make those changes, we're good. And then, if we could, nobody else had any objection, we do have to open it up to the floor.
I think, like you said, those changes, it's just one change, right?
Uh, two, we had the, we had the presiding officer moving a motion. Oh, no, that's just one, I'm sorry, yes, I approve the other, that's just one, only one change. Did I miss anything from any of the other charter, if I remember, you can skip on ten o'clock here.
No, no.
We're good. Um, I'll open it up to the, since citizens have any comment on the Charter Review Recommendations. Back to council? Mark moved it? No? Any comments? Last comments? No? Patty, I have three to read again, right? Fred? Do I have three? Because we're going for a vote on number seventeen, so I think I have three to read. I believe I have three.
I know, historically, you have done that, but we didn't do it before, so I think, if we ask, right?
Because I don't understand what I'm asking for. I'll read it fast.
You should be consistent.
I think I should, and I don't want to say, you're supposed to call the question, according to Roberts, and I have to, I'm supposed to frame the question for everybody, so. Here we go, folks. Consideration of ordinance twenty dash zero two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bellar Beach, Florida, relating to five proposed charter amendments for submission to referendum, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for amendments to Article Two, Section Two Point Zero Two, Article Two, Section Two Point Zero Four Five A, Article Two, Section Two Point Zero Six, Article Four, Sections Four Point Zero Two and Four Point Zero Three, and Article Nine of the city charter, providing for five ballot titles, providing for the city clerk to obtain Spanish language translation, providing for approval by the majority of electors voting in the November third, twenty twenty general municipal, municipal election ballot, providing for a notice of an advertisement of the referendum election to be published in accordance with the state of Florida election code. Providing that upon addition of this, adoption of this ordinance, the five proposed charter amendments shall be submitted to qualified electors of the city of Bellar Beach, Florida, on the November third, twenty twenty, general municipal, municipal election ballot, and shall become effective as provided by law. Providing for the city clerk to confirm and clarify the charter amendments to the charter if approved, providing for appeal of ordinances in conflict here with, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and providing for an effective dates of, date or dates of proposed charter amendment or amendments. This is the first reading. A yes vote will bring us to the second reading and prove it as we stated with the one minor change that Mr. Riley made in consultation with the city clerk. No, there was only one.
Hey, I was wondering, is it second, can we read it?
Where are you? I'll come and read it to you personally. Thanks, buddy. You're a good friend. Okay, mayor, yes, there's two, two changes, as I understand it. In Two Point Zero Two, you wanted additional thing in, in the ballot question about the effective date of twenty twenty one. I would do that. I would do that, because I think Dave Gaddis clarified that, yes, and Jody Shirley was correct, we just don't want to do more than two terms, it's too consecutive. We are all on our first term, okay? And we're gonna get to do one more, if any of us wanna continue, so that's it. Yep, it stays just the way it is, that was good. Okay, with that, I'll move the arms.
Council member Bean.
Aye.
Council member Gaddis.
Aye.
Council member Shirley.
Aye.
Council member Swob.
Aye.
Council member Aki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Vanzo.
Aye. Passed seven to zero, moves to the second reading, and we're going to move the second reading, if we can, I have to ask you, clerk, can we move this? Because Fred has a dead, Fred Riley has a deadline of the eleventh of August, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we have a choice, we can do a brief meeting for one of our budget meetings, or we can just put it on the August, then, because I think it should go through, but if we have a problem on that August, we're gonna have to have a secondary council meeting, so I'll do whatever council would like. I think we could accomplish this, that August cannot have a special meeting.
If we are already having another meeting, and we haven't yet seen the, the final writing, it's probably not a bad idea to have a five-man meeting for those.
Why don't we do this, if, Mr. Riley, if you can pull it together for us, we have two budget meetings upcoming, I can call a meeting on one day's notice, basically?
Mayor, we have a, what is considered a special meeting, to set the tender to begin on the twentieth of July, so.
Oh, for the budget, the work, budget workshop? There's a special meeting? Okay. How about the twentieth, Mr. Riley?
I don't know.
Sounds good to me. We'll vote on this on the twentieth. Okay, we're halfway through the agenda, folks.
Four hours.
Oh, no, we're gonna go for six. Okay, so, we have item eighteen, consideration of a resolution, of Resolution Twenty Twenty Oh Seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bellar Beach, Florida, establishing an amended residential rental registration fee pursuant to ordinance eleven dash oh five, establishing an effective date. The description on this is rental property registration rate increase. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Marv Bean makes the motion.
Second.
And second. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Bean, you're on the floor.
It's very necessary. Anybody else?
This was a recommendation, I'll just say, this was a recommendation of the Finance Committee. This is a fairly profitable community to be rentals in. City manager and his staff spend a decent amount of time doing this, our code enforcement spends a decent amount of time. I'm all for it. Anyone else?
I don't know, I just thought we didn't think it was enough.
Keep it in that, if you're trying to.
Twice. I'm open for discussion on it, that's for sure.
A proposal, how much would you like to run to? It's going to three hundred, so.
Honestly, I mean, it's a, it's a yearly fee, and they're highly profitable. A little tiny house on the corner, entering my neighborhood, and I believe they're renting it for forty-seven hundred dollars a month, and it's probably not even two thousand square feet. Wow, you know, three hundred bucks? I don't, I don't see that. It's really anything, nothing that we didn't consider. I would say five hundred would be more reasonable.
I agree with you.
Okay, we do this for the liking, we show them up, show them up, agree with your argument, you know? Let me ask one question before we get too excited about this, to our city attorney and city manager. Is there a legal cap on what we can charge?
I'm not aware of any of these.
How many, um, how many properties does this affect?
Uh, I'm just going to give you a roundabout number, it's probably about 230.
230 rentals? Is this a blue condos, or are they just from a simple family?
Condos. Anybody that rents a year or so.
So it is, is it an annual, or is it per renter? So in other words, are some that are, okay, so it's annual?
Yeah, we send, uh, uh, notice out in, first part of September, and then they have till, uh, when they do leave, the first October, then nine, 30 days, because we have $100, but in a perfect situation.
And it may be a disinformation, but what are we charging now?
100.
100. 230 times 500 is 115,000, just so you know.
An increase of $92,000, I guess.
I'd like to add also that that, that property is not waterfront. That's a corner. It bunts up against two other properties and you can sort of see the water from that property, to give you, to put it in perspective.
Yeah, but does anyone see how much property it's sold for? I'm just, you know, if you buy a property at today's market price, you have to rent it to cover your cost at that number. I'm just, just being devil's advocate here, you know, you have to, that guy's probably not making any money at that $4,500 a month rate, because I'm thinking it's the new house, that, I mean, the house they just remodeled, and the price was steep. It was in the neighborhood of 600,000 or something. So just to be fair, I, you know, I'm just throwing it out there to think about.
You, currently, it's projected you're raising at $200 a year. And that's what the Finance Divisor Committee suggested.
I think it would make sense to stick with the 300, but over time, consider raising it. Because if you're going from 100 to 300, that's a pretty big jump. I mean, I can't get you guys to agree to $5 more in parking fees, why all of a sudden are you going to penalize this guy? You know, the guy that's the investor who happened to buy a property, or someone that's, you know, bought a property in Beller Beach with the intent to retire there eventually, or something, so.
If he retires later, then he wouldn't pay.
Well, let's, let's do this.
Well, Fred's got something.
Okay.
I'm looking at Section 54 dash 62, which is what you're amending. And you're setting a resolution that establishes the fee, and there's no limit in there. I also am looking at the resolution that you're considering this evening, and the, as it's stated now, $300 based on the estimated administrative financial and enforcement costs incurred by the city. So you're projecting into the future what you expect it to be. And if, if you're amending your suggest, or projection, it's going to be 500 rather than 300. And that's the way I would look at it. And over time, obviously, costs increase, and that's a, you have a rational basis if you are going on the projection that the cost is actually going to be $500 rather than 300. I don't think it's such a great thing to make the nexus be, we'd like $200 more, and that be the basis for increasing the cost. But if you, you have a rational nexus between the amount you're asking for and what you approved in the plan.
Let me ask you this. Mr. Gaddis, Councilman Gaddis, you have the idea, do you want to make an amendment? Or you want to, at this point, refer to the citizens?
I've got a couple of questions, can I get there?
Okay.
Uh, one is, how many rentals are we talking about?
230, roughly, it might be 235, but that's.
I, I tend to agree along the lines with Jody Shirley. It's kind of like a parable of the boiled frog, turn up the heat just slowly, and the whole, drink out of the water, participate in the ditch board, unfortunately. I mean, it's easy to justify an increase in maybe a year or two from now, and you tend to look at it again. And then the third question we have is, is Rick Shock is still in the audience? One was his basis for picking the number of 300.
He's here, and we'll bring that up when he has the citizen comment.
Thank you, thank you.
I have to agree with Jody Shirley, and, like, I think, I think it's a good idea to maybe give this to 500, right? But maybe go a few steps if necessary, let's go from 1 to 3. So you will make an amendment? Okay, thank you, but it's a great idea. Any other citizens, any other, uh, council comments? And citizens, Rick Shock, did you want to say something?
The reason that we came up with the number 300 was because one of the members of our committee was a, had rental property, and he was actually the one who suggested that it need to be raised from 100 to 300. And when we did the math, it came out to a very nice number. And I, I think that what Councilmember Shirley mentioned, going from 1 to 5 would be, that's a heck of a jump. So I just think, we thought collectively, and agreed as a committee, we thought $300 was a reasonable raise of that fee.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Back to council. Mark Bean, you move to give last word.
Sounds like a good compromise, we'll leave it at 3, but I think in the future, we ought to look at maybe chicken it up going forward. If they're getting that much for like a house, 500 is a compliment.
And there is a cost, I mean, this isn't just money that's just, the city's taking. City manager, his staff spends a significant amount of time policing these rentals. And also, I would also say policing, we, when you look at crime reports, it's the rental properties that usually have the action by it. I know recently we've seen a few of them, so I think it's justified, we need to do it higher.
An enforcement officer has to stop by and correct any issues, beach tags issued. I'm sure your renters don't care about our hair.
Sure. Okay, are we ready to call it? Okay, so this is consideration of Resolution 2020-07, resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, establishing an amended rental, residential rental registration fee pursuant to ordinance 11 dash 05, establishing an effective date, rental property registration rate increases, the explanation. A vote yes will increase it to the fee from 100 to 300, I will increase all the roll.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Mantow?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero, this will go into effect, the effective date? Now? October 1st, okay, so October 1st, this will go into effect, so I'm capable of working with that. We doing okay, everybody? We doing great? We're good? Okay, 19. Consideration of Resolution 2020-08, resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending parking pay station hourly rates at Bayside Park, the Community Center, City Hall, City Marina, and Morgan Drive Park, and establishing an effective date. Is that also October 1st?
No.
That's now? Okay.
Change in a couple of days.
No problem. Hourly parking, this is an hourly parking rate increase, put up by the city manager, do you have a motion?
So move.
I had a tie here with Jody Shirley and Mark Bean, how's that? Mr. Shirley?
Yeah, so, again, I've been kind of pushing for this, because I really like to get our parking back, and I'd love to see the rate much higher than what we're proposing here, but this is to increase the parking rates in our Morgan Park, Marina, and City Hall parking spaces. Eliminating the all-day purchase and going to an hourly rate that is slightly higher on the weekends and holidays. And I still think we have earned to increase it more.
Oh, I'm going to be that guy again. Not only, um, uh, did I originally discuss eliminating the all-day rate, but I also really wanted an hourly cap, the maximum number of time that you could bank in that meter to force people that are parking and utilizing that meter to stop what they're doing and go back and feed it, just because it's a pain. And, you know, yes, we made a lot of money off of it, but at the same time, they may very well decide, oh, this is such a pain, that maybe after three hours, they'll go, and somebody else can use the, use the meter. But I just think, for what it costs in surrounding cities to park all day, this is still really cheap.
Yeah, you're right, David, I think we even talked about not only capping the amount of time they could put in the meter, but capping the amount of time they could stay, like with a four-hour maximum or something, is what we discussed.
Well, I can do that with the meter, that, all, what I'm asking for here is just to raise the rates. And there is, there will be no more daily rate, is that right? No more daily rate. So if a person that, in the past, uh, came at 9:00 in the morning, and on a weekend paid $20 till 9:00 at night, now it costs them $60. Just to give you an example.
And does your, um, the printouts that you get, or the data that you get from that, does it give you an average staying time of a people parking?
We probably could get that, um, I'd have to look at the report.
It might be helpful to what Councilmember Gaddis has suggested, because if we know, let's say, you know, right now, we're all complaining that, that the things are overflowing, we can't, people, residents can't even get into their parks. So if we know people are staying for five hours on the weekend, then maybe we, to be fair, I mean, this is a fairness thing, if we say three hours, or something like that, we need your, your metrics to do that.
Well, I, I think I could do that, you know, if I find out that the average is three or four hours to the council, you know, I don't think we need to come back to the resolution to do that. All I need from you is, uh, raise the, raise the rate.
But you'll let us know then when you're going to cap it, because I, I can agree with this cap, I do. Any other council comments? Citizens? Yes.
June Van Scoey, Street, Beller Beach. Um, we talked about Rudy Davis' work, did a, a new map of that Morgan Street, not Morgan Street, but the Marina. And he found additional parking spaces. Can we not factor that in, so we can get a temporary fix to the other homeowners? They could have some of that parking at Morgan? So if we picked up five more spots, because of what Rudy Davis did at the Marina, could we not get those five spots back to our citizens at Marina Street? You know, it's just a thought. Plus, isn't that a packed-down shell or rock? Can we not somehow just take some pavement paint? Because if it's packed down, it's not going to shed too easy. And we designate those spots, we can park out those spots to create the area that we need, at least to fix this until we're out of the agreement, or whatever this council decides to do. But at least, that way we'll put up some spots for our residents at that end of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Want to bring this conversation into session?
We're just talking about.
Beach renourishment, okay. Is that me, did someone tell them to leave the conversation? Yeah, it has to be both of you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's a suggestion for additional spots, I don't know if you've heard that.
Well, the.
You think some of it, Rudy Davis apparently found some for us.
Well, the parking lot at the Marina was laid out by an architect with those positions there. We can have a discussion with Pinellas County, because they're the lead for the beach renourishment, and see what their theory is with the Marina parking lot as opposed to Morgan. I know the architectural layout, that nine, nine-foot parking spaces, there's 70 spaces there. And that's what we have a drawing up. And I'll have to look back at what Rudy, but I don't know that he picked up a ton of spaces there.
I think she said five, so I won't remember exactly.
Yeah, I know.
Five, and that's good compared to what we have, so five is enough.
Yeah, but we need to ask that question with, because it's proximity to the sand also. You know, you have to have X amount of spaces within a quarter mile of the sand that you're getting re-dermed, so.
So do you want to move it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is all in that conversation, I know a good reason I look at that, and it's kind of interesting, because they needed 70 parking spaces, so beach renourishment again, when you look at the layout of the Marina parking lot by the architect, it's exactly 70 spaces, but there's a lot of tention, ponds, and some areas of trees and stuff. And I think we looked at it and figured we could probably squeeze out probably another 10 spaces or so, but it, it, for the meantime.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I have Leslie Terrell.
Um, I, and the answer is to whether we could put more of the, Morgan Park back to city residents only, I don't believe so. When we first did beach renourishment, you had to have X number of parking spots within X linear feet of a, um, beach access, which is why we had to get rid of a whole bunch of the, um, resident-only parking spaces in Morgan Park. And I mean, and I don't think it was a county thing, I believe it was the state that got, you know, to get the sand, so. And it was pretty tough, because we had those silly bike racks along Gulf Boulevard and stuff. So, you know, unless they changed the rules and made it less strict, there's not a whole lot of it that we can do with those parking spots, so move them around.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Back to council.
I keep looking at the parking in Flawless, and you walk a lot further than what the restrictions are for us. Doesn't mean anything, but it's worth even talking about.
Any other council comments? Jody Shirley had the last word, if anyone wants.
No, I don't have any further.
I'm going to call a question. Consideration of Resolution 2020 dash 08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending parking pay station hourly rates at Bayside Park, the Community Center, City Hall, the City Marina, and Morgan Drive Park, and establishing an effective date. You can tell us what you're trying to think of as fast as you can change it, basically, right?
It'll take a couple of days.
Couple of days, okay. Okay, so a vote for this yes brings in the new rates. Attorney clerk, please.
And just as someone like, what is the increase in the new rate?
A dollar per hour, no. It's a dollar per hour and no, uh, all-day parking fee.
And the city manager will get back to us in terms of a cap, a lower cap, as suggested by Councilmember Gaddis. Attorney clerk, Vice Mayor, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm just a bit bored with, uh, Dave Gaddis, making painful, and that's one way of controlling the demand, I guess. It doesn't, possibly, keeping the prices high, possibly, we also control the demand.
Okay, we had discussion, now for a call to question, so any other council comments? I'll call the question again now. Consideration of Resolution 2020 dash 08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending parking pay station hourly rates at Bayside Park, the Community Center, City Hall, the City Marina, and Morgan Drive Park, and establishing an effective date. A vote yes for this changes those rates now, as fast as the city manager can change it, in a couple of days. Attorney clerk.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Um.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Mantow?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero. Lynn, if you get out there with your change key, make those changes, and then let us know if you would, what the cap could be, just so we could have discussion, maybe, if you go ahead, as to, you know.
You, you know, if I find that it's three hours, do you want me to just go ahead and put that gap on there?
That's what we were looking for, Lynn.
Three or four hours, whatever they have. I'm thinking three.
A three-hour cap. We all agree with the three-hour cap?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Need a bigger truck to haul all of the money, Lynn. Okay. Item 20, consideration of releasing and removing June Van Scoey from the Parking Recreation Board, sponsored by Councilmember Swope. This is City Council to vote for removal of June Van Scoey, do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
It's open for discussion, Councilmember Swope starts.
I hereby respectfully request the entire City Council votes for remove Ms. Van Scoey from the Parking Rec Board due to actions taken that do not represent the city in manner which is expected by one of, by member one of our advisory boards or committees. Advisory boards are designed to advise the City Council members. The only authority is the quorum of the seven duly elected members of this board. Ms. Van Scoey has consistently represented herself as the assistant to the mayor, of which Beller Beach has no such position. She has taken on roles that are not part of the Parking Rec's responsibilities. At times, these actions have placed this city and our citizens in jeopardy, and apparently, by the outline, and that's apparent by the outline of events sent by Mrs. Kaluchi. And that's apparent by the outline of events set by Mrs. Kaluchi. These events have been ongoing since September of 2019 and have escalated over the last ten months. In short, a call was made to Mrs. Kaluchi's boss at his place of employment on September tenth. The caller announced herself as the Assistant to the Mayor, whereas this person went on to state disparaging remarks about Mrs. Kaluchi. And then the action directly resulted in another action that occurred on November the fourth, right here in the parking lot of this building after a City Council meeting. Ms. Van Scoey approached Mr. Kaluchi regarding that very phone call. The Kaluchis were harassed, threatened, and called vulgar names, et cetera. Sadly, this altercation itself was never addressed by the City Council. It didn't end with that again. On November eighth, an anonymous public records request for calls made by Ms. Van Scoey on September tenth was asked for and has never been supplied. This created months of various actions taken as stated in the emails... in the email outline provided by Mrs. Kaluchi. Prior to the town meeting at Bella Shore, the City Commission on June sixteenth, 2020, a fax was sent to the City Clerk of Bella Shore with a copy of Mrs. Kaluchi's public records request. Ms. Van Scoey then called Bella Shore meeting and read her statement. During this call, Ms. Van Scoey immediately announced her position with the Bella Beach Parks and Rec Committee, also announced her relationship with the Mayor of Bella Beach. But the most concerning statement during this call, and I'm going to quote, was, "It would be a crying shame if one person is permitted to sour the excellent relationship between the mayors and the cities," in court. This statement most certainly could be construed as a threat that Bella Beach and Bella Shore will have trouble working together if steps aren't taken by Bella Shore against Mrs. Kaluchi. The City Council is not a council of eight decision-makers. It is seven. We cannot have members of our committees and our boards representing themselves as holding a decision-making position. We have got to try to stop this. It's been going on for months. And this is just one or two against that I'm mentioning here. Again, I ask City Council to remove Ms. Van Scoey from this board immediately. This isn't about the amount of work that the Parks and Rec's Board has put together and has done and accomplished. It's about representing yourself as someone that is in a position of authority with this city. We cannot continue to have this happen.
Counselor.
Hi, you know, I'm kind of torn on this, but it's for a different reason. And I'm going to try to explain this the best way that I can. First off, I would like to commend Ms. Van Scoey for spearheading a lot of cool events and really taking part in the reins and trying to make improvements in our city. However, not always is a good performance in one area. Does that make a good employer, a good coworker, or a good board member, or a council member, or anything else? This can be applied anywhere. You could be really great in one thing and not so great in other things. I'm just going to read something that I took off of Skype today as I was chatting with my wife about this because I saw this and I was caught off guard by it. And so I go to my wife and we have discussions. The one thing that I will tell you that we don't do is anything my wife and I discuss in private, she generally doesn't become my spokesperson. So here's what I wrote. My take is that if they were married, and we all know who we're talking about, their combined conduct would not be allowed. But because they both identified themselves as life partners, they exist as married without the legal obligations. From an ethical standpoint, I see no difference, even if Florida law doesn't. As proof, the mayor has stated over and over that he is not guilty of a sunshine violation because girlfriends don't fly. I say that because this conflict keeps occurring, she plays two roles. One, the mayor's unofficial assistant and press secretary. And two, chair of the Parks and Rec Board. I just believe that that in itself is a conflict. And I think that it would be in the city's best interest to remove June from the Parks Board so she can better unofficially serve the mayor. I also feel that had it not been this type of a relationship, that maybe the mayor would not have been so pushy about making sure that Ms. Van Scoey had way more time to speak at each and every council meeting since she took over that position. And also just to push her ideas hard onto the council. Just speaking from the heart.
Dave, I'm trying to ask, but can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, are you going to make me read this all over again?
Okay, no. You'll just pick it up off the microphone, I think.
Okay, all right. Again, I'm just speaking from the heart and this is just the way that I see it. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me, but I think that there is conflict. And even if legally there's not, I think from a city perspective and the citizens, the residents in this town, I believe that many do feel that there is a conflict. And I just think it would look better on the council, also on the mayor and on Ms. Van Scoey to step down. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I'm like the most naive, equal person on this board. I'm more ventriloquist. But I don't think that that's a sunshine violation. Because that would be the same thing if I had conversations with June and I'm married to her. Yeah, I guess we have friendship. Would that be a sunshine violation? Because it's part of the council. Now, if she was on the council and they were married or boyfriend, girlfriend, that would be a sunshine violation. Am I understanding that right? Because I can talk to any board member.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, just correcting that. Second, I mean, it's a piece of paper. A marriage certificate, right? It's a piece of paper. Whether they're married, committed to each other, hate each other today, love each other tomorrow. Hey, they may have a better relationship than half the married people in the city. So I don't think we should judge them based on boyfriend, girlfriend, or marriage. There's been spouses that have gone on the Nextdoor app and have been married forever, but we're not, you know, condemning them. To address the issue about allowing her more time to talk. Let's face it, guys, the Parks and Rec Board has done a heck of a lot more than the other boards, like the Board of Adjustment. You know, as far as presentations, they did a lot of events. She had to get a lot of approval. So yeah, she had more things to discuss. Therefore, was thankfully granted more time to discuss these things. And I think she's done an awesome job, her and her park board, of different events for the city. Because before, all the years that I lived here, I didn't even know half my neighbors three streets away. I didn't know because we didn't have opportunities to kind of go and... And just the idea of a festival, a car show, just kind of like piqued your interest. Hey, I'll go, maybe I'll meet some neighbors. So I think she's done a lot for the city. Do I think she should represent herself as Assistant to the Mayor? No, it's not an official title. You know, and I agree, maybe she shouldn't do that. But part of me thinks that a lot of this stuff is personal. It's personal issues between two women, three women, five women, four men, whatever, people. And I think personal issues are getting too much involved in politics and I think we need to keep it aside. I have personal issues with people, but I'm not bringing it out here. I'm not suggesting someone step down because I don't agree with that person. So I think this number twenty is kind of ridiculous. If she was doing a bad job at Parks and Rec Board and overstepping her bounds and turning it into a frat party or doing something crazy that doesn't go along with our Bella Beach values, then absolutely, that would be valid. But I do not think she has done anything wrong in representing the Parks and Rec Board. I think she's had nothing but the city's interest in bringing the city together. And I think honestly, in this, 2019 was the most the city has come together and socialized and met people. I mean, it's amazing what we've done as a city since I joined council. And I think honestly, if this group of people didn't join the council when we did, I don't think we would be as close as we are as a city. So that's just my rebuttal.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? No, I...
Do you have any comments?
I think more of us... Go ahead, Clint. Clint, you want to go first and then... Okay, Clint, go ahead and then Marv Bean.
Okay, I had the... I hold respect for June. I think she's got a lot of initiative and I think she really took her job on the Parks and Rec Board very seriously. I think there's a lot of distraction.